Some of the meanest.
Yes, I.
I was low, I got a little. All right, all right, we can go. Look, y'all, let me, let's open up. While we can't think, it's time to come together. Lord, um, it's, you know, you give us many examples in Bible about money. And Lord, we know that, that it does, uh, make this world go around. And, um, he helps with the needs that people, um, um, that do need. And we just ask you to be our guidance and help. Thank you all these things in Jesus Christ, I want to say. Terry, I appreciate you coming. How long you been with the G E C O?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, I figured it'd been some time then, so.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Well, the force, y'all, what we're trying to do is just, uh, see what, um, some of our department leaders and leaders are looking for. And, um, helping them get through this, uh, next budget cycle and, um, and things that you might see forthcoming, you know, however, you know, all of it. If you have any things that you might be unforeseen things, you know what I'm saying, so.
Okay.
Mr. King, if we could before Terry starts. Sure. King, you are one of those in front of them?
They know. I told them, they like the God. Other women speaking.
And I purposely just listened to you.
Okay.
Ask questions.
Well, I want to pass out our, uh, little, um, news thing that, um, Ted so nicely put together for us, our R O I. Uh, we had kind of highlighted last year. Last year was a little bit of a struggle because, um, there were a lot of things shut down that I was used to doing more camps. I mean, I couldn't do a lot of camps. I did do one camp last year. But, uh, we're getting back on the swing of things and getting kids to camp and, um, then I did a lot of STEM in the schools and did three hundred and eighty kids, six hours each. So, um, that was great support to the school system because a lot of the kids had not been able to do hands-on education because they were at home. And, uh, it helped the teachers out and it made a big impact in their scores. And it helped the kids realize science isn't that hard. It's more fun than hard, so. Um, we do have the breakdown on the back of the funding. We've got twenty-six percent state, twenty-seven percent federal, because we always get federal dollars being extended. And then you all, uh, help us with thirty-seven percent. And this year we are asking for eleven percent increase because of a salary adjustment due to, um, a compression. When I was hired, I was hired at thirty-five. They are now bringing people in at fifty. Okay? So they had to adjust it somewhere. And they came up with an, a difference. And that was through the state. That wasn't my duty, not my asking, the state did that, so.
Pima didn't say anything.
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, because we do have Reed, who is our ag agent. Um, he's a new hire and he does need lots of training and we're asking you to use forty of his training dollars. And ag agents tend to have more technical needs than four-H agents do. But, uh, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you got a place in the school system to help the children? Do you go to the school?
I go in the classroom.
Okay.
I'm with the teacher in the classroom. I sit down there with their pacing guides and I develop hands-on activities for them to engage their students. And then when I go in, I facilitate those activities.
All right.
I also go into the high school and do teen cuisine. That's not even listed there. I work with the ninth grade through twelfth and I, each semester I work with about fifty kids each. So there's more numbers that I deal with, but that's just STEM. They highlighted STEM this year. We'll highlight something else next year.
Okay. All right, y'all got any questions for, um, Steph? Seems like you really think, getting excited about getting back into the classroom and getting his hands on started.
Well, I work with after-school too. I do Twenty First Century with kids and I do natural resources. We do leaf collecting, we do art, we do, um, mental health activities, you know, trying to teach kids how to deal with stress. And, uh, I do that every month with the kids as well.
Terry, I just want, sorry, I just want to say thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Because the little nuances about the breakdown where the funding comes from.
Right.
Is the little things that never get expressed. And when somebody says, well, you know, how much money came from where, I appreciate that.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. Oh, anybody got any questions, clarifications? We do appreciate you taking the time to come see us.
Not a problem, you have a great day and it's gonna be a long one.
Maybe do something with that.
Thank you. I did, but I'm not that good. Uh, we just gotta work on the weather, the weather is weird.
I know, I know. I'm trying to figure it out. Do we have? All right, Mr. Vaughn. Bring it, bring your off that brain out for a second. Did that piece come in that classroom when I was on the wrong? Huh? What did I teach you? Besides not putting my hand in the woods. If you missed that, then you were sick. Oh, yeah. Looks like it's fun stuff, though. My wife's always like that hands-on line, that STEM. Well, STEAM is what they bring the Brooklyn to, that's what. All right.
Um, while we've got a break, I wanted to share, um, I was talking to Matt Claybrook. I was with the health department right there at the door when everyone came in. And he asked me about talking to her, I T. Um, and seeing if we could potentially merge those two things because they're trying to get away from B D A. And it would, it would probably stay.
For that.
Yeah, it, it would alter the, you know, what we're paying for the local health department support too, so. I shall see a problem with that. I don't make that connection. I don't know that it can be done, but I told him that would certainly fund.
Who does that, that's how the budget be today? Like Pima, that's like one, one, two million dollars. We have a butt of data deal. It's crazy.
The downside of not allowing them to.
So going back to the correct, Terry, so a lot, so only thirty-some, thirty-seven percent.
I guess that is.
Since it's on the table, let's go through it if we have.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to figure that out because I don't want to discuss people's money. If we, if some money comes in early and sets up with that.
I understand, yeah.
But go ahead, I hear somebody in here right now, so. I mean, you got some ideas, some thoughts of you right now, you just, as we go along.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, I guess at some point we're gonna have to get a consensus of.
Who agrees with what and what we're gonna do?
Right.
And how we, how we all appreciate that.
There's a six thousand, she said, it's for salary compression. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, I understand that's good about the state.
It is. But it's over.
So how do you normally approach this one, through all of this? Do you plug in to the budget, the request, and then we look at how it all plays out as part of the big picture or?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm going with the package itself. I've just been putting numbers in.
Yeah.
Up, you know, it was waiting on.
As they, as they've been presented to us.
Yeah, as they've been presented to us, right.
So do we really want to even make, have consensus today?
No, no, what's so, yeah, that's, I'm hearing it, I'm hearing it. I'm brainstorming, I'm thinking. So what we need to do is, is somehow if you can give us a, like, her name and a chart. I mean, I'm, I'm brainstorming, I don't know. And this is the increase, but also make it, you know, driven by a state or, you know, something that we can remember that. And then show the inc- somehow the increase, the whole total from last year. You with me?
Yeah, I have, um, I have one for one in every budget detail is written down so that I can, you know, comprehend some kind of change.
And then we'll have to have another, this, uh, Ted, I can bring my schedule with me, but I think you got something in that possibly having another meeting to discuss.
March.
March thirteenth, okay.
And hopefully we'll have an actual prepared document where we'll actually see what's in it, anybody's request.
That's the Thursday, as I work session Thursday, right?
Yes.
And, and what's, what King's referring to is, and I haven't been here all day, uh, did we get those revenue numbers?
Um, I got part of the personal property this afternoon and Christine discussed it, but on thirteen, she's got thirteen thousand more items to with values to.
We're still getting the revenue numbers.
Okay.
Okay. And then the school board's gotta go through their budget.
Right.
Process. So hopefully by the thirteenth, we'll be able to say, okay, here's a cut. This is how much it looks like in expenses. This is how much it looks like in, in rounded.
Right.
You know, so we're living that, and then whatever has to be done to bring it into balance.
So we're looking at a budget work session on the thirteenth, is that right? Is what, do we know what time of day we're looking at?
Seven. It's at seven, that's whatever.
And that's on Monday the thirteenth, right?
March, March the thirteenth.
But on Monday, it's the third Monday.
It's a Monday, second Monday.
And, I'm sorry, Ted, I should have mentioned it, but anyway, um, I'll say that you're honored to follow all of this research. Is that a research?
Those are Richmond's files. I wore that to the, to be that today.
And white, okay.
Yeah, it's good, it's nice.
And a celebration.
Uh, I want to share a photograph with you, all of the, uh, flowers that were, uh, sent to the county.
Oh, okay.
They were strategically placed, uh, decided for magazines cremated, along with a beautiful portrait of him, uh, in his, uh, down stance as the left tackle for the University Richmond's.
So that picture was in, he was, he was like, he was the man, man, he like, he did some sides to him.
I'll tell you, uh, you know, that was the first father that I ever walked into and, you know, met, met the date's father. That's the first one I ever looked up to. Everybody else I was, I was taller than they were. He was, he was, he was big, you know? My boys are six-three and six-four. One of my nephews is six-seven. We know where he got the height from. Got the height from, got the height from granddad. But thanks, thanks for my, yeah, it was good to do it. Thank y'all.
No.
Thank y'all for y'all's support throughout the whole process.
Yeah, the, um, most of the boys are over six foot and I'm five-eleven and a half. But they won't put that on my license, I've asked them.
Give you every little bit.
Round it back on it. They don't round it up, anyway.
Wear you some heels next time. You'll get that.
But he looked like he was, he was a thing.
Yeah, he was, uh, he's, he fell where he is.
So, y'all okay with that process, you know, going through it, okay? Then we can have open discussions then.
I've gotten an email from, you're scheduled six fifteen, I mean, five, what time is it? Four fifteen. Um, Ms. King, which is the court service unit, she said court ran lower than expected. She was on her way a little before four.
March thirteenth, on the four o'clock.
Seven.
Seven.
At seven?
Seven.
Let's see, reach out to Jackie Chan and tell her, come on over here. I think I hear.
You all said March, what?
March the thirteenth. It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, okay.
The week of the, the work session, what it would normally be, that second Thursday, is that Monday? It's Monday the thirteenth.
Right, so we, we, that's what we, we're not meeting on the actual, I mean, we're, you're not doing it on the work session that's really scheduled for the night.
So we have a work session on the night?
Well, no.
I don't, we don't have a schedule for the budget, no.
No, so we ain't, we, we didn't finish, you don't care, but we didn't finish our work session last night.
Is that Wednesday night? After this?
No, that's N E C.
Tonight's economic development.
Okay.
The night is gonna be ticking us back up on the list that we can get.
Right, we, we still haven't got.
We have a workshop.
We still have, now, y'all, we can meet, if, if, we can do that at six-thirty if, um, if Helen, I know Helen's gets on at six. Is that too pushing, too much, or we'll do it at seven?
Six-thirty is fine.
But I will, I guess we need to talk about that in, in the, well, we can plan it now, but we need to make sure the public knows in the next week. So we, we didn't, we got to, I, I want to figure out how we can do that list and, and one thing that I got to cap on, I'm not getting off subject here. Um, uh, what, what the goal is, is to what's the difference between process and projects? You kind of see what I'm saying, so I, I, we gotta really talk about the projects. I mean, I mean, and, for example, that, we have not done our part, well, we, we haven't done very well. I got a call from Jack Boswell and he called me when I left Richmond. And I talked to him when I passed Triplo, Terry. And he was like, anyway, and so we really need to go and see, you know, if we don't make out a project, swing project and get a timeline and move on.
Yeah, I said the work session switch was, uh, seven and six thirty, right?
That's our, that will be at nine, is that nine?
Yeah. So you'll be at nine at six thirty.
And, 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 and keep that in your brain, the sixteenth, we gotta, we gotta meet at six. It goes in all, highway ball, right? Six thirty.
And you, the thirteenth, you want to keep at seven?
Yes.
Yeah, Terry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know you got a hard time with numbers. Uh, that Shannon, you're coming on.
Yeah, we can move, we're on the flip flop. Actually shows up, we've been recording this, starting and Tracy, he knows. Now, how about the court services, Kathy, is that so much percentage to us?
So basically, it's, it's office support, you know, there is, um, we don't provide a great deal for them, but we do have the personal defender program in that budget.
Hey, are you Tracy?
Yes.
I'm Steve, I want to have a seat, I'm Steve, thank you for coming. What, what, you couldn't get this, come on in, Jackie, sit down, you come, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. We just want to sit down and talk to you a little bit about your budget and what you're looking for this year.
Yes.
All right. Is y'all like, everybody know Tracy?
No.
Okay.
I am Tracy King, the Court Service Director.
Okay.
So I maintain the caseload of our young people who are in trouble. And we also do custody and visitation positions for the court and we attend court for those cases. So I submitted a brief, um.
That's, that's just right here?
Yes.
I got you.
One of the things that I had a question about was our telephone system that doesn't quite, and I didn't write it on there because I didn't know where it would go. Um, we've had some difficulties in our building with being able to serve the public because our phone systems are up and down. We've made several phone calls, we're across the street.
Yeah, so you're right, and this ain't done with socials.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, and we've had some complaints about not being able to be reached. Um, law enforcement, you know, come over and call also to try and get some things done with some of our young people. So without us having our phone system constantly, we are, um, having to use our cell phones.
Wow, okay.
Yes, so in some research previously, um, I kind of found out that our phones, it, we bought several types of phones, but those phones are not compatible and I didn't understand that. So there's some wiring that needs to be redone.
Oh, yeah, I, I bet you, so we, I've seen some of that, like, some phones will go analog instead of digital and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Some phones have connected to your computer.
And, and that's where we're having those concerns at because I have purchased phones from my state budget, but those phones are not compatible and they're saying it's some wiring.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I, I know, I know what you're saying, it ain't gonna work, it's not gonna work.
Right.
This, the state's probably got phones.
That, that building is an issue altogether because D S S has had to do the same thing. Terry Abson, I say, her in trouble with their phone lines.
Are you, are you telling, we need another project? What, what, what are you got here?
Does it work? Yeah, yeah, we got what's the same as the offices.
Is your, is your state phone look like that, Tracy, I'm just curious?
The phones over there, no, they're phones like, like, like nineteen seventy-eight phones. I mean, they don't even, we don't even have an access to have two lines. So if somebody's on the phone, the other phone doesn't, you know, we can't even transfer.
They still have the same from the original.
Yes.
Wiring from where the building was.
Yes, it's in nineteen seventies.
And none of the phones.
Okay, all right, so I, I, that's going back, that, that's a problem, that ain't, that's not.
That's not me, okay, so I wasn't sure.
No, 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 but I'm glad you told us. I mean, it's something, and it sounds like it's, it's bigger than just you, it's other departments.
Yes, so, but I wasn't sure how to ask or who to ask for what.
You said that just then, you said, right, thank you. I wouldn't have a clue unless you brought it up.
Yes, so we've had some difficulty.
Okay.
If I can get some assistance there, that would be greatly beneficial.
All right, anything, so can you explain this a little bit? Um, you just asked the difference of nine hundred and ten dollars.
So that was, I was gonna try and purchase some additional phones.
Oh, you were trying to do the.
I was trying to.
Survive.
Yeah, but it was, it, but the system itself is not.
You were trying to buy phones to match what you got.
And I can't, I can't.
How do we, how do we tackle this monster? Like, we got somebody that's in that kind of business that help us look at her stock. Shannon's joined in because she's already been through this.
Shannon, you want, go on to take a few minutes, take out a word a little bit, but, uh, this Reed has been through this already.
Jackie, you have this, I'm sorry, go ahead, you have a second, thank you for your patience now. All right, so can I speak on, and then, and then, you know, everybody's table hopes? All right.
You want to tell us how we worked out your situation?
We called Connects and they came out and they had to run lines. We had Mr. Cospen's approval for them to come and run new lines for us.
Okay.
And we didn't have working phones, but this has been a problem, it was a year. And we called Verizon, I've gone to that Verizon store because they told me I had to make a appointment. I made the appointment, they canceled, they said it was COVID, they didn't have people working in the store. So I made several trips to different places and Connects on their website, they say they don't service Northern County. And I said, let me try to do it again. I did it and it came out. Mr. Grant, the company owner, actually came out and discussed this.
But they took him to five hundred ones?
Yes, so we have five hundred.
So like what we have?
So, I mean, let me, back up for a second, it's our building, right? So should we be doing this? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm in the right direction.
So let me ask you this, can I submit my bill to you all?
It's our building, yes, ma'am.
Okay, fair enough. It was a lot of front calls, yes, to get the new system.
Well, wait a minute, let me, I didn't, I handled the question before I know. She said, play it through quick. I, I'm curious, what was it called? But the most important part is the citizens' reason. Yeah, I mean, that's what it's all about, I mean, we can't, we can't act right now.
And I mean, they, and what was the central link, I believe, they put them in a file because when they tore them, it was switching, central link, shut them off a week early.
Yes.
And we had to pick up, they had, we had to publicize that if you needed social services, you needed to call our offices. And we were literally running messages.
The county administration's office helped us, I mean, impeccable, well.
Right, so, so it sounded like we need all, we need to do the same thing with this office and whatever office, so the social services in the same situation?
We are, we are social services. I think it's for.
Extension services.
It's extension.
Yeah, so.
They question the building, yeah, that whole building, that whole building.
But I don't think it will cost as much now because they, they click out.
Okay.
So we just need to finish up the deal.
And that's what you're trying, y'all have teamed up, you don't want no Van Talk there, Adam.
I, I mean, talk to him.
She'll be dying to do it.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
My asking Shannon was totally not part of that.
So it seems like what you're asking is very reasonable, um, Tracy, I appreciate you doing that and we'll see if we can help get that rectified for you.
Thank you.
Anything else you need from us?
No, I think everything else was just the normal, uh, what we usually get for B J triple C A. Um, our telephone systems and, um, that's it.
Right, okay.
We're not asking for much, but I know, well, so.
That sounds like a plan, so, thank you, that's a good conversation.
Thank you so much.
Anybody got any questions for?
Well, just a question about, so you were drawing the, the difference, the amount, hundred and ten dollars for phones?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did, right, good question.
Yes.
Because you were trying to buy different phones.
I was, I keep trying to buy, yeah, like.
This is back below.
We've had Central Link, we've had Verizon, we've had all these different people and I'm still stuck. So we are, we use our cell, cell phones as a backup, so we won't have, to have the county administrative office money to us.
Yeah, you gotta be tough, I mean, you can't pick one whole, I mean, you can't get two lines. You don't, you don't want people having problems, I mean.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, Jackie, we be, since she's already at the table, okay?
Sure. I'm sorry.
Ms. Reed, Ms. Reed, call me, she's got five dollars. Thank you, thank you. Reed, we're, we're gonna, so y'all go over one, if you don't mind, and see what you got. Do you want to start, tell us a little bit what you, what you're asking for and what you're thinking?
My requests are, they're not many, um, but I talked to Mr. Cospen and Ms. Tom earlier about our budget. The most significant change we made was in our legal fees that actually doubled and basically they done it because, um, attorneys are charged us more. And then we can calculate how many children we're gonna make the cost of here. How many counties we're gonna have to utilize those legal services. So, and they doubled part of the year previously as well.
So it's not like they, they need to go more prices for more children, is that what I'm hearing?
It's both.
Oh, but who, who is the lawyer, do you mind that, yes?
Matthew, can I put your answer with the grabber? Grabber, grabber, yes, grabber, whatever. And they work with several local D S S agencies.
They're specialized for adoptions and foster.
Oh, I see, that's in that name, okay. Um, yes, it sounded like you got a budget, I say that, but it's, it's floating, I mean, I guess.
It does.
Right. So, um, Katie, how do we, how do we handle this, this monster?
Well, she, she also needs to share with you other information about.
Keep going.
Did you, I hope you started with the, that's part first, we'll see.
Well, I did ask for this in our budget, but as our caseload has increased, we have a number, we have a certain number of employees in our office right now, and we have caseloads that are four hundred plus. That's really not manageable by my staff. They're working over, they're staying late, sometimes later than they would like, it's not really late, um, but they, they're trying to get their cases managed. We're now going through a process called unwinding and that unwinding process means the people who were earlier approved for Medicaid, they're being cut off. So they're being cut off, they're also wanting to appeal these decisions. We have to do those appeals individually, so if you request an appeal and you grant one, the workers have to get all this paperwork together and make sure people have, so explain to the person why their appeal is gonna be withheld or if it's gonna be denied. So we have to do those processes. So I'm working on getting numbers together from local agencies close to us, close in proximity, within our county district, to look at their case numbers and their staff. Right now, we have agencies who have less cases than we do and more staff than we do. Except for our agency, to, we're overworking our people. And I have, last year had a high turnover rate.
You think that's part of the retention problem, which is that they all work? It, what, is it a number, I mean, I'm just asking cases per person, you know, you see what I'm asking? I mean, is it a s- industrial standard, I don't know.
There is no standard, but just for comparison sake, Prince Edward has, um, their eligibility workers who are seasoned, who've been here at least a year, year ahead. I have a normal case of two fifty to two seventy-five.
John, have you seen this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, we, she presented all this, well, she, she's got this birthday, this is now our monthly meetings and, um, it, it's pretty shocking, the, the one thing I will say is she's done a phenomenal job and writes the ship over. Now, I feel like this from our point, if we don't give her what she needs to write that ship, that ship is stopping right there.
Well, if you got, if you got, I mean, I missed, thank you, again, I love it, okay, so if you got funding, you guys, how many staff do you have now?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three staff, so, and it sounded like they write the caseload, so. So if you got vacancies, it should be some tailings of funding that's there that would stop being utilized, is that?
We do, and I have three more positions that I plan to fill, hopefully within the next six weeks.
And would that give you a full load of, I mean, uh?
It will, but it's still not gonna help my numbers because I have a family services position who won't carry that big caseload and then I'm hiring from the supervisor, my benefit supervisor.
Okay, I got you. So would you be willing to, just asking, like, let's say they come back to you. Okay, I got you, so would you be willing to, just asking, like, let's say they come back to you and say, do you need five more people? Would you be willing to try to pick two first, and instead of giving us?
Before I hire these people, I'm gonna ask you all to give me more office space. Because right now, the county has been kind enough to allow Mr. Bellick to come over to our office, and we have a space behind our front office that holds file cabinets. Some of them are empty, a lot of them are empty, we can have them moved, but he gave us an estimate for a petition, we can make two offices out of that space. And then we also have another office that doesn't have a door, so we've asked for a door for that space as well. So we're trying to make do with what we have.
No, I get you.
But then, I've exhausted all of my space, so for, if I hire anybody beyond these three positions that I have, that we're gonna be interviewing for, I will have the space.
Well, and, and see, just, uh, February sixteenth, that, that's when they changed. I mean, there was families that was getting money, they had a rate of like, family files, like maybe eight, nine hundred dollars, it cut back to like two hundred dollars. And so that's, that's where a lot of the issues are coming up from the appeals, I mean, you're talking a drastic change, some people went from two hundred dollars to fourteen.
Got you.
So there was additional work being done, but they have a process.
Come on in, say it, I'm sorry, Lynn, it's anyway, um, okay, so, um, all right, you got you, all right, well, we're not thinking, it sounded like you gotta give us more numbers, the office space should be even, Lynn, you got something you think about?
I was just wondering, you said Prince Edward's case was two fifty to two seventy five, how many employees did they have?
They had twenty workers, they're actually short five now, so they have twenty-five total, but currently they have twenty.
You have twenty-three, and what, you tell me, what's your case value?
Six thousand two hundred and thirty-one, our caseloads, right now, but we are working between three hundred to four hundred cases.
And is this because of COVID and more people qualified for the Medicaid?
Yes.
Two K?
Yeah, you know, we talked about that, um, it's something like, you know, it's, um, we, we don't really know the repercussions from, from COVID and the mental health issues that's coming from, you know.
And we knew that some people would be cut.
Right, right, right.
And they would have to be re, revalued.
So Mr. Cosson gave you a little something, this is like, you think this is the fix to get additional space for forty-three hundred dollars?
I think that's a quick add, yeah.
So it would look like we're gonna have two issues here, um, board members, is, is some more labor coming down the pipe, and some renovation to the building, and of course, now that, you know, running out of that is falling as well. So, um, somebody had a question, it slipped my brain. If, if you get that office space, that you can make do with, if you get more staff, if I hit that right?
If we get additional office space.
If, if we do, if we get that, if we get that additional space, you can put two people in that one office?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the board's three hundred?
Well, see, I'm gonna.
That's why I, I ended up.
It's in your, it's the last, should be the last page in the document.
Hold on, oh, it is behind us.
Is the row best in the middle?
Uh, yeah, I didn't flip, I don't did it last, um, okay. How much, Katie, what, because they, they fund a lot by the state, how, how much do we?
From the state?
Yeah.
It's an average of sixty-eight, I would say sixty-eight percent.
Okay, we're like, thirty percent, thirty-two percent, okay. All right, any questions for?
Any estimate on what the additional staff members, we can put in, three to five more staff members?
Yes.
Any estimate on what that would cost the county?
So you, if you do the salary, and then we do, and then you have to figure out, we do thirty percent of that salary, right? Thirty-two, I would have.
So you have to have state approval?
Yes, I have to get a request for the new positions.
Okay, okay. Does the comp board have anything to do with that?
No.
No, no, it doesn't, okay, because they can, they can be slow at the gate, unless you listen.
The only question I had, Mr. Chairman, was, uh, did Reed have the van placed in this?
No, we did not talk about the vehicle, um, we do really good.
See, um.
Yeah, I got one, if you get sick.
Yeah, yeah, see, we got, well, the one of them, by social terms, is to go here in a park lot, and not be melting down, because it's just no good to have two. Uh, one, one case in, in specific, Ms. Reed, from all peaceful records, but, uh, they're taking those two vehicles, and sometimes, and they're having three to four children, you have a driver, and someone accompanying them, children as well. Both of the cars are gone if a situation arises, the van, I mean, exactly, all I see.
You do have partial funding, you do have partial funding in there for a vehicle, or I mean, this vehicle, or it's a replacement vehicle, or that.
I'm also a place.
You, you did include some.
Point of staff for this year?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah, there are some extra vehicles to crossroads, we have a bunch of them, like two hundred. I don't know how many are left. But that's a possibility.
We're gonna, you're gonna see.
Crossroads can't throw those vehicles.
No, no, they're, no, they're not, not all of them, some of them are still goods.
But, but yeah, another point, what she's saying, though, one of our trips, and it's, was it weekly or monthly?
Monthly?
Monthly, February. That was why I said to make that trip.
And we had one that she was making a trip, she went to Carolina every month.
Just, just for my care, I was like, you say, if you had a case, and it is multiple children, let's say it's three, okay? So you have a person that drives, and then do you have to have a person, a person, but each child, or do you have to have at least two?
It depends on the situation, if the, if the children are manageable, we can have one worker, usually I like two. One that can drive, and one that can pay attention to the children, that's for safety purposes.
I got you, makes sense. All right, so wrapping it up, I'm hearing, you're telling me, right, I'm hearing, you need more office space, you want to fly to the state, so you need, get some more staff, okay? And then we would have to come up with the percentage of that difference, okay, I mean, you know, the thirty-some percent that we got, okay? And so we got the office space, thank you for having me friend with the phone, we need to rectify that, and then we may need another vehicle.
Yes, I have one more.
You are really killing me today.
I don't think I got the tape.
And then we got too many witnesses in here, can y'all, can y'all go inside, close you, what, what now?
We did not include this in our, um, budget at all, because I know last year there was a five percent increase for salaries there. So the House of Democrats and the Senate voted increase the five percent paid for state employees and state-supported local employees in fiscal year twenty-four to seven percent. We did not include the seven percent, we did five. The system is, I just wanted to let you all know that.
Yeah, back up for a minute, I'm, I'm gonna say, yeah, so I got a five percent, and then we get another five percent in July.
We get seven percent, seven percent.
That, that changed, it, it.
It just changed.
My man Duncan, he's killing this, ain't he? So, okay, I did not know that, but that, that, has that been approved?
The House, it is passed by the House of Lords.
I can't believe that, all right. Yeah, go on, did you know that, Lynn?
I've been looking at the paper, I don't know.
I thought it was the jail ward, um, we were, we were discussing about how percentage, where it's like, do the five, and the other two percent will be based on, based on evaluations and incentives. Can we do that same thing with these items here, or is this something that happened?
Tap, tap, tap for a minute, tell, what did you lose?
I need.
That's important stuff.
Yeah.
All right, Chairman, go back to them. You mean, you see them all, do you want?
No, I didn't hear.
Y'all still on the bed?
I was in my chair. Yeah, I messed the lock, I was on my way while I was making your straight there, I don't know. Okay, I was like.
Sorry, I didn't, that's important stuff, all right, go, finish, sorry, John, say, would you ask again?
No. Well, I, I understood, uh, jail ward is looking at like a base five percent for everybody, and then an additional two percent based on performance. And he's asking if we can do something like that, I've basically been playing around with three percent based on performance, that's like a grade of zero to three, based on the individual project assignments that staff have. In or the assessment of a supervisor, say for example, uh, Mr. Easter at the landfill, and all the convenience center workers, and all the guys out there at the scale, he's kind of given me that, but the range has been zero to three, nothing more than three. Now, of course, I'm sure the staff are like, you're five, and then something above five for performance.
I got you, all right, we'll have to take a, you know, we'll have to take a look at it, I got any questions? When, Katie, when we finish with this process, we, we make, we do probably have the options, you know, there too. And you sort of mess, well, we have a budget, when we start making agreements, does that make sense? So, so salary adjustment, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Well, we start with just looking at the out of balance budget, that's kind of what I'm doing.
Then we're.
Yes, we're not gonna be able to have the comparison in the documents.
But I think we could do a chart that says, this is what state folks are getting, this is what we're proposing, you can kind of see a, a difference there. But yeah, I think we can see something on paper that would summarize for you what those are looking.
Yeah, you're talking this separate from what you're talking about?
Yes, absolutely, yes, this is a background piece of information.
Okay, okay. All right, Ms. Reed, I'm, I'm sorry, I got, we're, we're trying to figure out this process, there's a lot of moving parts, you understand, okay, um, you, I'm not gonna ask you, is that the last thing? Say, yeah.
That is all.
That is all, for now.
For now.
Yeah.
I was gonna go with her time's up.
Any, any question, any more clarification, thank you, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, we do want you to be successful in any way we can have.
Thank you, I appreciate it, the county's wonderful.
Jackie, come on up to the plate.
Thank you, guys.
All right, say it.
All right.
Jackie, thank you for coming, thank you for being so gracious to let somebody switch with you, you just got kind of whacked that bad, I'm, I'm caught up, so anyway. What do you, what do you got for us?
Um, nothing major, I was just here to ask that the additional money we're getting from the state aid be passed through, you know, in addition to our budget.
Okay. Jackie, while we look at this, I'm just gonna ask you a question, because one of my constituents asked me, like, the, the building, like, like at Burtful, the library, so if, if Burtful owns it, did they do the maintenance, or you have to pay for that? I'm, I'm just asking, is that come out of your budget?
Um.
Uh-oh, I put you on the spot.
That would depend, um, in the past, in the old building, we have split the cost with the town, um, for some things, other things, they took care of entirely.
Okay, so is, is every, do you have a different relationship with each town? Okay.
Each town covers a certain, or, each town covers different things.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've worked up a chart that shows which, what we cover with each library, and what the town covers for each library. And it's, it's consistent with his inconsistencies, okay, and I think that's a fair assessment, okay? Um, and again, it's one of those situations where there's no written agreement, it's, it's kind of been, well, this is the way we've always done it. So, uh, we can get you that chart, so you can do a comparison.
Right, um, yeah, if you, if you would, I think that would help, um, now that we're trying to get the mayor's at the table with the, um, E D C, um, we could have that, some, some of these discussions on the side, so you, so it would be fair for the library and her budget, and their budget, and also be fair with towns too. Right, um, hmm, okay, Lynn, you got a question, I'm just thinking about, all right, I think yours is, you might pretty cut it, cut and dry. John, you got anything, Helen?
No.
Chairman?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pushing off again. Come on, hey, come on up here, um, Ms. Walters, beside Kate. Hey, Rita.
I don't know, I think, I might need the side.
People like Rita, you can't say much to her, because she'll just retire on your, you know.
Well, we gotta lose, right?
I know, I got a lot.
He only has a lot to lose.
I, I know some of the things we have already talked about, but I showed us what you wanted to get a little bit of that.
Yes, so I want to split my time a little bit, um, brought Rita with me for any questions on the victim witness side. Um, I, I know Katie is aware that we think over time, the grant money is going to be decreasing, if not going away, for the victim witness partner. And so I wanted to start with expressing to the board how vitally important that program is. Attorneys aren't known for our compassion, um, or handholding, and that is part of where victim witness helps, but it's not just about that. It's about making sure victims understand the process, making sure they have someone to sit with them in court, making sure they have someone who can spend an hour on the phone with them, um, talking over the, hey, this is impacting this part of my life, and then can consolidate that down for the attorneys to, um, you know, to help with us in our timeframe, so that helps our workload, and there's been no one better at it than Rita.
Okay.
She's amazing at it, and so, um, just for future years, they're still working on budgeting and the money with the grants and whatnot, and reasonably, there's gonna be a decrease in some of the funding from the federal level, it has been thus far wholly covered by grants, if not like ninety-five plus percent covered by grants. I think over time, they're gonna be looking for localities to start.
So the grant money pretty much got it off the ground, I guess I'm gonna say, and then, kind of like these, uh, uh, these officers were here in the schools, same type thing, I think.
And we worked very hard to get that grant, too.
Right, right.
I think, uh, Judge Royal was the Commonwealth attorney then, and she and I wrote a grant, and we went to meetings and presented things, and were able to get it, so we were very excited to get that.
So, so Rita, like, with, like, if there's a, if somebody comes in, I guess they're already scared, they're already scared because they got to go to court.
Yes.
Then they're nervous about the situation they're in, and so, how, how does that work? If they go in a room and you stay beside them, or you talk to them?
Whatever they need, I'll hold their hand, I'll sit beside them, have little squeezes that I'll give them to squeeze, fresh balls and things like that. Um, and you know, the therapy dog, the program that I started with Chance, that, you know, I lost him tragically.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have not a replacement, but a continuation of that, and it has helped so much, because when I lost Chance, I was ready just to stop. The people that reached out to me, that told me, he saved my life. They sent me notes, and gifts, and cards, and calls, and I knew that it had made such a difference that I couldn't let it go, so that's why I wanted to continue it with faith. But that's, one of the examples is the therapy dog, or someone who is soft, buzzy like I am, and wants to get on the floor and play with them. A, a child usually has been violated by someone they knew, loved, and trusted.
Right, right.
They have totally been blown out of the water by what has happened to them, then they're thrown into an, an office, I usually say cold office, and it's like, but you know, it's an office. It's an office, and they don't know anyone, they, so then they're asked questions that they should never hear, let alone be asked. But when you've got that dog, or you've got that person that was, is coloring with them, or playing hangman with them, or something on, just entertaining them, they will talk. They don't have to look at you and answer your question, but they will give you more information. The first guardian that lied on who met with a child and the attorneys was Cal Spencer, who's a judge now, and then he said he wanted to meet with all of the guardian on that, because the child poured themselves out, he said she'd never been able to talk like that. So this program is so beneficial to the victims, because, you know, they're embarrassed that something has happened to them, they're scared. You know, I get scared when I go in court now, I go in court all the time, so the normal person gets scared, and a person who's gonna have to stand up there and say, that man hurt my daddy, or that, you know, that lady, you know, terrifying.
Yeah, yeah.
But they can feel support.
So you think grant money is, you think it's gonna drop this year, or do you think so?
We think it's gonna drop ten percent on the federal funding, which we think is about seventy percent of the grants, so ten, it would be about seven, no, I'm doing my math wrong. We're, we're going to see a, less than a ten percent decrease of what we're expecting in federal funding this year.
You can't, you can't, you can't.
And they're only guaranteeing funding through twenty twenty-four.
I think, I don't remember.
That's right, so after that, there could be nothing.
And historically, and I think we included it in the budget this year, I don't recall, because you have to have the ability to have, um, health insurance, we've always acquitted that, Rita has not taken advantage of that thus far, so I don't know how much the county will, if that's gonna even out, but just wanted to give the county that heads up.
Okay.
Another thing victim witness does, um, and then I'll, I'll move on, is protective orders. Commonwealth attorney's office does not get involved in those, but if someone wants the assistance for how to request a protective order through court, Rita is vital in that, and our office is not called, because it's simple, so that's another thing.
And I will tell you that I am vested in the people who are, have been victims of crime, or witnesses. A lot of them have my personal cellphone, which is probably not what I should do. A lot of them have my personal cell phone, which is probably not what I should do, but I care enough about them. And they will call night, day, weekends, it doesn't matter to them. But they will text me just to hear a voice, just to hear someone say, we got this.
Yeah. All right, that's good stuff.
So I wanted the, the board to hear from Rita.
The closing of Madeline House, thank you.
Oh, that has affected us tremendously, and we're still working on that because I think the closest place now is Prince George. But what I've been doing is we've been calling the eight hundred domestic violence line, and they'll take their information and direct them to the nearest place. If the nearest place doesn't have a spot, then they'll go further out. But it has been a real blow to lose Madeline's house.
We weren't involved with the first Madeline House. It went to Prince Albert, didn't it?
It's closed, you know, they, they lost it.
On the first night. Okay. All right.
So that, that was the warm fuzzy side.
That's, I got you.
You started with the positives.
And then we want to negative.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rita.
I wish I could add any comments. You want me to get your stress off?
You should pull it out of the.
All right. Let's get, let's go ahead and get into it, I know, I know what's coming.
The, the board, I think for several months now has been familiar with the request from my office. It's, it's ever there, we need those individuals. One of the things, I haven't checked the state budget, but coming early and getting to listen to other ones, the only thing I'm going to say is if the state budget includes constable officers and they change from five to seven percent, that would change the budget slightly from the salaries. In my request, every position but mine is supplemented. Ultimately, it would be up to the board whether or not you pass on that increase. Historically, the board always has, but being forthcoming and forthright with the board. So my salary, I do not have to take any supplements from the county, the rest of the positions are, because they need it far more than I have. But with the salaries and the office, my folks are awesome, they've been working as hard as we can. There was one weekend where I think I worked both days, one of my assistants was working Saturday, my other assistant was working Sunday. We're trying to keep up with it, but the need is there. The workload for cases individually have increased with the changes in the laws from the General Assembly. There are more jury trials. I think I have five cases that SNM now with Court Administrator on Tuesday night saying, I need a full day for each of these cases, if not two or three days in circuit court. That used to be one case every six months. We're seeing more work, more work per cases.
So let, let's open up, well, we could, discussions, but you kind of warned us, but I don't, I don't remember seeing the new administrative position. Was that something that you had mentioned before?
Yes, that is, the two things I've asked, and the admin is, we need both of them. Right now, staffing standards, current staffing standards, and I expect in the next couple of years, they're going to revamp those because they've had to do this time study related to that. But the staffing standards for just the felonies that we cover, so we need two point six attorneys and one point five support staff. That is not including the victim witness office. So right now, attorney wise, we would have appropriate staffing for if we only handled felonies. We don't even have appropriate staffing for only felonies for administrative. So that, you could walk in our office right now and there's probably, what, forty files filed up? Waiting for the admin, not because she's pulling her thumbs, forfeiting run size, which I would do in the office, but because there's so much work, administrative work that needs to be done.
Maybe you said, excuse my, you know, just in the background, you know, start reading. See, and this is all something like you get, if you got to do positions, all these, the chairs and.
Yes, I included all of that in the overall budget figures that I presented would be everything that I would need if I got the positions I'm requesting, the increases I'm requesting. I included all of that with the, the training, the increase in the office supplies, the increase so we can get the one-time furniture stuff. I already talked with Mr. Costin that if this board were to approve that, I would go and look and see if there's any furniture that would work out at our excess furniture site. I'm not trying to have fancy things, I want the people to be able to serve this community appropriately.
Well, that's what I want to ask him. Let's say we approved this avenue. What, what would the citizens, what do you think the citizens will get out of it?
At this point, if I can't get the extra staff, I'm not going to be able to do most misdemeanors. So.
So misdemeanors is the problem.
Yes, because the fun that, I also have to, I have a responsibility as a supervisor of other attorneys to make sure that I'm not giving my attorneys more than they can ethically handle. We have ethical obligations under the state bar to be adequately prepared for cases. When you have a DUI that has three hours of body camera footage that you have to watch for a single DUI, that's three hours for a case that used to take fifteen to twenty minutes to prepare. When you have a petty larceny from Walmart where you have Walmart video, store video, you have officer body cam from two different officers that go, that respond, they talk to the witnesses, they talk to the defendant, they arrest the person. That case before, I read a police report, five, ten minutes I'm prepared for court. Now you've got all that video that you might, depending on which opinion you look at from the bar, you're either required to review or should review. So that's why I'm saying these crimes that before didn't take as much work are taking more time. And those are the, I've already started not getting involved in some of the misdemeanors from Walmart. I am trying to save as many as I can, the assault cases, things like that, but we just can't do it all.
I got you. And so, so the people who do repeated, I'm just asking you this because I'm, it's, it's, it's the dark side I try to keep away from. People who repeat doing misdemeanors, eventually they'll be doing felony, is that what you suggest or not?
It depends, before I could say, yes, absolutely. We used to have a third offense, petty larceny became a felony. The General Assembly did away with that. You do have third offense domestic violence within ten years, or one year, twenty years, becomes a felony, you have some. You also have some folks who start small and they work up. The hope is that if you have a prosecutor involved when it's at the misdemeanor level, you have someone who can say, okay, you stole food from Walmart to feed your family. How about instead of convicting you, getting a theft conviction on your record that now is going to stop you from getting a job, which is going to stop you from feeding your family, which is going to cause you to steal more and more and more and more, maybe instead we take it under advisement, we give you community service at the local food bank. So now you've learned resources where you can go feed your family, we've given you a chance. We don't have a conviction on your record that might stop if you do it when you're supposed to, that might stop you from getting a job and then create problems in the future. But when you don't have a prosecutor involved, that's up to, is the judge going to sit up there and say to do it?
Right.
Maybe, maybe not. So when you got that prosecutor involved, you could have more creative outcomes. I try to look at and I encourage my people to look at, can we figure out why this crime happened? If so, can we fashion a disposition that might stop it from happening again?
I mean, it's one of those things, you know, it drives me crazy, I've seen people at Piedmont, they, they don't pay this child support, so they get their license taken away. When they get the license taken away, you can't work a bit. It's just, it's a catch, it's a catch, and then they, and then they won't pay child support because they weren't. So, right. All right. Anybody got any questions, clarifications? I think you, I think you very well, you got the documentation down pretty well and you understand, okay. Please tell what you, what you expect. Well, we're, we're having another work session to discuss these things and we thank you for putting this on the table. Trying to do the best for the citizens and, and now it's the ball's in our court, we got to see what we got to do.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. If you have any questions, please let me know, always feel free to reach out. If there's any other data you ever would like that I'm able to provide, I'm happy to do so.
Right, got you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, good to see you.
Good to see you all, too.
Maybe you, you always welcome to come back.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I see it, I saw your strategy, I saw your strategy, Paul reading.
I'm an attorney, I have to have strategy.
Right, right, right. Good, good job in the court.
I was the preacher.
All right, come on up here, young fellow. Shane, you're doing great. Thank you all for seeing me. Y'all want to say? L R A.
Hi there.
All right.
I'll put together a little passage, if you want to follow along with me, would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
We're right on time. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I'll pack some. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I appreciate that a lot too, Shane, you came in and told us the things that needed repairing and things. And I say this, I, I, I know, know this.
Yes, sir.
Where you had nothing but great respect for, like, John Hill.
Absolutely.
And that it was the hill way, and I'm sure it was going to be the chain way. And so, and so I know that we, you know, we want to be able to keep that L R A up and then, and getting our funds to come in like we want to, because that's what we want. I'm hoping that can be bought by economic development in the future, you know.
Absolutely, I respect them predecessor and everything they've done. It's just at this point, it's time to go forward in a different direction, hopefully. That's what it comes down to.
Okay. All right, tell us a little bit what you're thinking here.
Okay, well, I, I kind of, I hope you don't feel like I'm all over the board. I'm just going to touch base on a few different things that some are priority and some are just Christmas wish lists. We have two shops, one of them is where we keep our tools and a lot of janitorial supply. And we have a second shop near the RV campground where we actually keep our lawn equipment. We have two tractors, we have twirl turnaround tractors and lawnmowers. It needs a new roof, there's literally, you can literally see through the ceiling and see daylight. When it rains, all the equipment gets wet. There was a tarp on it and the tarp is worn away. And so I didn't realize it till the last couple of rainstorms, it was a tarp covering all that. Now that it's worn away, estimate would be about eighty-five hundred dollars. The second thing is, this was just another thing that was discussed at one point. There's an old firehouse, original firehouse on post, not far from the actual L R A office. And a few years back when we had that big ice storm, apparently a tree fell through the back part of that, that firehouse, and it destroyed it to the point where mold and structural issues came up where it can't be saved. It would make a nice empty lot in the front to rebuild or do something on. If nothing else, leave it as an empty lot. But I don't know exactly because I don't do a lot of demo in that field, but I would estimate to tear that down and haul away all the debris, forty-five to sixty-five thousand, unless we have someone that the county knows that, that does it for a living and has a better price than me. I don't think you can save it.
Right. Is it building insurance?
Sir.
So you did insurance, something.
Have the fire department to burn it down.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, yeah, something, no, Mr. Hyde mentioned that one time.
It was, I don't know, six, eight months after that, so. We got the payment in the building.
So you got the payment and then one thing. Wonder who did that? So.
Steve, what I was saying to Mr. Hallard about this old fire building, I'm very familiar with it.
Yes, sir.
Get the fire department to burn it down.
Right.
See, Nick could do a thing with them.
So. So Shane, I mean, I see your list and we could walk through it. And it's a lot of, I'm seeing forty-six thousand, seventy-five thousand here, flip over twenty-five, no building.
Yeah, some of it's a wish list, it is.
Yeah, so what I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking the board, do you think about, how, how can we, I mean, if we gave them, let's say a hundred thousand more dollars this year and say, hey, start making some repairs into your list, because, I mean, if we, if we do, if we gave them everything, it's going to be like I have, and I lost all of it. So I'm trying to figure out how can we take the new guy and make his new path so he can start making some newer paths, you know?
I can give you a quick answer.
Okay.
I give you the Cliff Notes. The Cliff Notes would be, the biggest Achilles heel we have that's draining money from the L R A is picket lodge, the three buildings that are our apartments. I wish I could say better things about them, it has nothing to do with any one person or group that made it the way it is. It's age and time. The buildings are old. The first thing we need is water heaters. I'm getting calls on weekends at nighttime, and I'm getting a call from Sheriff's Department to go reset water heaters on a weekly basis. They need replacing, I have three estimates, they range from twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand and everywhere in between to get three of them replaced. One water heater, domestic water heater, supplies water for each building. Each building only has one water heater.
Right.
And they're oiled, and the parts are hard to find.
I got you.
It's, it's impossible.
Well, there's one that had asbestos on it, didn't it?
They all do.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, they all do. So that's, that's just for starters, and we have some four with B C P town that probably has it as well, even in common areas, if someone steps on it, they're probably going for the floor. I have orange cones in the way, so people step on it, we're trying to get repairs. I did a little assessment today, actually this morning, and the income put into that versus the income you're getting out at the end of the day, at the end of the month, you're probably making a couple thousand dollars on three buildings of rent, where you should be making ten to fifteen thousand at the end of the month. We're only making a couple thousand because there's so much repair, so much janitor supply, housekeeping, repairs from contractors, repairs from daily wear and tear.
Yes, sir. When you, when you said custodial, one of the stories you told Katie now was that folks that were renting less than a month.
Yes, sir.
The L R A took care of toilet paper and so.
We do.
Whatnot. That has been extended by practice that, that's a, that's an ongoing service.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know, you know, I rent.
That's not a hotel.
It's not a hotel. I rent.
So we got people renting and.
I give them a toilet paper?
We do.
Chair, can I make a reference? Just.
Um, a military contractor, civilian contractors from the military, some military that are training and they're civilians. It's basically, I spent, my last month was five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars just on janitor supply for three buildings, and we have less than a hundred.
Holy smokes.
Yeah. And we have, and our payroll for housekeepers is six thousand eight hundred ninety-one. So you have thirteen thousand dollars just in housekeeping for three buildings each month.
Well, labor and materials, you got thirteen, and for one month.
For one month.
And so how much were you bringing in?
Well.
In those run, I mean.
One building last month brought in fifty-seven hundred, one brought in fifty-nine, and one brought sixty-nine. So do the math. We're only making a couple.
We got a, we got a mismanagement thing.
This is welcome, Ms. Chairman. I don't know if we have anything for the next board meeting for the L R A, but if we don't, just a suggestion, should we just start at six thirty and have a detailed discussion about these specific items?
Remember, your next meeting, you've got six for the public hearing for.
Well, the.
And we've got six thirty. Six thirty is the usual meeting. I don't know if you can get this done in thirty minutes.
Or you put it.
All right, well, remember, I had suggested that we do a special meeting out there at the renaming ceremony. If we could maybe do something.
Okay.
In the morning.
Yeah, that might be.
Set the tour and see some things, do the renaming ceremony and I guess we'd be done today.
Mr. Harvey, why I suggested that because we'd get so far.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, it's just like.
But it has, it has to be a detailed conversation.
We almost got more money going out than we got coming in.
You're right, it's almost like it's.
Just a little bit, couple thousand.
See, and his, his deep bowling brain, I think is the greatest thing since chocolate cake. Not everybody agrees with that. But I was hoping, I said, man, wouldn't it be nice if we make so much out of L R A and then we, we start an economic development funding because we get so much from rent and we just dumping money back into debt.
We can, there's a, there's a way to do that.
Yeah.
There's absolutely a way to do that.
That's what I think, I think it'd be very, very fruitful to, if, if Mr. Costin's time.
Well, I mean, that's the whole purpose of L R A is economic development, that's why it's government gated to us. So gated back to us, let me pray.
Yeah, so there's a potential revenue source out there. About the time that John Hill's wife passed away, I covered a meeting for him, the airport out there has to have a buffer established around the fence. And it's over time, that has grown up, not just our property, but the town's property. You've.
I've been working with Martin. While I manage, yes, sir, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin. Some of the private entities that have bought out there, Virginia Tech, oh, we all had to come to the table, have a conversation about trimming out around that buffer. Well, there's a fence there, so it's kind of hard to timber without taking out the fence. So what we're looking at possibly doing is timbering up to the fence. And if anything close to the fence would be felled away from the, from the fence, okay? There's, we're sitting with a potential revenue source right there to timber that might help pay for some of this stuff. Now, I understand, I wasn't here, that that was a proposal made by Mr. Procyx that didn't go anywhere that because we might need that money someday was, was the response, okay? That day today, that day is today, to take care of some of this stuff. And if I could change what I would ask you to do, if you prioritize this list.
Yes, sir.
Safety, health.
Yes, sir.
Because somebody stepping through a floor, that's not, that's not good, but safety, health. I mean, if something's going to fall. I mean, if something's gonna fall down on top of somebody that needs to get fixed.
Well, you know, that and a lot of water infiltration, for lack of better words, in a lot of units. And we have eight units down right now just because of that. The last one to get up to rentable condition was about four thousand dollars. So when you spend that times eight, just to get a unit that rents for three hundred and thirty dollars a month, it takes you how many years to recoup? And housekeeping does their laundry, cleans your units, we supply sheets, toilet paper, towels, soap, we supply all that. It's basically hotel standards.
It sounds like a small sum. It's a rental problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so we got two, we got two things. We got, we got, we got a fix that's broke.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We got to stop the bleeding.
Yeah.
And then I want, I still wanted, I wanted, I want to go back to that idea of using funding from the LRA sometimes for economic development. But we got to fix what we got, so that's what's the problem. So my question is, can you start thinking about a plan? I mean, because you got, you got that background, like, if we went up and rent, we got rid of giving people toilet paper. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not saying we got to make a hundred percent profit, but in a way, we're subsidizing, guys. We got people that, they should be renting and, you know what I'm saying? If you ask me and say, hey, do you want to rent in Blackstone or do you want to rent over there, they give you free toilet paper and they treat it like a motel and it's cheap. What would you go to? Right. You know, so you see what I'm saying? So that's not fair for the towns either, you know? Or the businessman who owns the apartment complex.
Yeah, there's a bigger plan and picture that I thought about. And if you ever want to go in deep, I can present it to you another time.
Well, yeah, let's, but we, we got this, this, you gave us a bit grocery list. Yeah, the online works section, yeah. On-site works section. We're planning to go ahead for that rename. I don't know if the whole, the whole board committed to yet, I don't think. But maybe we'll, we'll try to figure that out. It's, it's, I have to.
Barfoot, yeah.
It's gonna take me a long.
It's, it's no trickery, is it?
Okay. I'm gonna long that, because I want to take it.
Yeah.
My pop, he, he didn't go, he said camping.
Yeah, a lot of people forget that. They do.
Any questions, Shane, Shane, keep moving forward like you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, good work. Glad you're getting on board on our team.
I appreciate it, yeah. I'm looking forward to doing better projects. There's just absolute financial potential and to be a bright spot in the community out there. Absolutely.
Thank you. If you can, four minutes will save that, for the, you know, to save that list somewhere for the LRA, to put that in, take an LRA file. I appreciate it.
Great, so thank you all very much.
Thanks, Shane.
You have a great day.
Good day. All right, Chief, shoot, come on over here and congratulations, Joey. Come on, set it, take all your work, man. And congratulations on Chief, you know, at State, if you keep messing up, they make the boss.
That's what happened. It was a railroad town for recent.
Is that what happened? Is that what happened?
I'm glad you know.
That's how I got into this so many years ago, I messed up.
I weren't, I weren't with Joey's wife and he was, you know, and Kathy would say, well, Joey, you gotta run here. I said, I thank God, I got you. We're like, Joey, I'm commuting to run in here and run there, so. And we do thank you. And also, Joey, I understand you do a lot of, you know, with the doctors, doctors group and, and tell us a little bit about that, don't we?
Disaster relief work, we do through SDCV, Southern Baptist. I did like six, six different states. We do after hurricane floods, whatever, recovery. Then we've also started back goods and regills.
Okay.
So come back and try to feel back now.
Appreciate the dedication on that, man, it's good stuff.
I beat off a couple of times and it's nice.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we also do, you know, the. Right, that's right. John, Chief, we appreciate it, we just on a first main basis, we appreciate you coming. I think everybody knows everybody at the table and, and you know, but you fill it down to you. Okay.
I go back.
All right.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, Joey, you go first.
All right. I, I passed y'all a sheet of paper around so that, there's only two sheets there and one thing I wanted to say to you with, Buddy has been instrumental in helping get some things going this year and he and I, you know, he told me when I worked, was working on this budget request, well, you got to get it down to where it makes sense and justify what you're asking for. So we boiled it down to two sheets and I actually used his draft budget expense report to, to make mine. I just added a line to the bottom and I pulled everybody else out of it. We did ask this year for the largest request of either the Emergency Services Agency, it was a forty-one thousand dollar increase. And the numbers you need to pay attention to are the ones highlighted in yellow that is the county's actual contribution to Burkeful Fire Department's budget.
John, to make sure I'm clear about too, we only talk about, and to, y'all just represent the fire departments only and nothing about emergency squad, correct?
Right, yeah. I represent.
Okay, got you, okay.
So, to, to explain a little bit about Burkeful, that there's, there's something that makes us different. One, we're the only fire department in this area that has career, fire and EMS people staffed in the same station. The only other one that is doing is Dewey County. We did that because of the necessity of staffing. And the ambulance, a lot of people, some people know how the ambulance got there, some people don't. But the ambulance got there because in two thousand and two, we were working to try to get an ambulance in western portion of Nottway County and our efforts were unsuccessful. I mean, everything we tried. We offered to let the emergency staff there, we allowed for it to be placed there and it was just a no, 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 we're not gonna do it. So that's how the ambulance got there. So that makes us unique in that area. We are running fire and EMS operations, ambulance transport at that station. It literally has two different budgets. And a typical fire department's capital outlay budget is fifty thousand, ours is a hundred thousand. Amelances have to be replaced about every eight years. Two amelances, it's fifty thousand dollars a year, so that makes our capital outlay about a hundred thousand dollars. Also, we are the busiest fire station in the county. The second page you have shows the call volume that we have. Shows the call volume that we typically run. During the COVID epidemic, we were over nine hundred. This year, we were eight hundred twenty-six. We also very busy from mutual aid standpoint. We received sixty-one mutual aid responses coming to us in twenty-two. We went out a hundred eighty-seven times across the county for mutual aid. So we're serving a large portion and Joey kind of gets stuck in the same boat because their mutual aid vote was from the crew. But that does make us unique and once you pass about four hundred calls, trying to get it done with volunteer help, it is just simply going to go away, you know?
Yeah, that's volunteerism, y'all, that's down.
And when you look at, when you look at the Burkeful model, and I won't expect you to see the, just the two colors what's important. The yellow you see is active volunteers, the pink you see is paid people. You know, what happens there, just like everybody else, our roster is about thirty people, we have thirty-one on the roster. I have six full-time firefighter EMTs, I have five part-time people, one of those being a part-time clerk Abian, and then there are six active volunteers. So to try to grasp a concept, you don't have this page.
Yeah, I'll see that one again.
But the colors tell the story. This is where it's going and, and I think that Burkeful has been a good role model and a good test of that. But as you can see on the first sheet I gave you with the, with the numbers on it. And what we did, we took the county's numbers, just as you have them in there, and we marched right on through each year. And you see in twenty nineteen, Nottway County was contributing seventeen point three seven percent of our budget. Our budget for that year was five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars roughly, and you see there was new ambulance purchasing that year. The twenty-twenty budget, it was four sixteen, twenty-one, and the nice part about the way we do the budget for you, I finish up twenty-twenty-two calendar year, then I know pretty well exactly what you gave me and I know exactly what portion of it was. So it trues up the amount of money that's given to us. Now, we're, we're in your twenty-three budget right now, because I'm in the calendar year. So, you know, I proposed a budget, it was gonna be five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred, ten dollars, and it was gonna be about a twenty-six percent contribution. At the end of the year, when I close out our books, I will know exactly what the budget was and what the contribution is. What that does is allows, allows us to true up these budgets as we go. Now, I want y'all to ponder something for a second. If someone came in here and offered to do fire and ambulance service, if you told them that you would pay them thirty cents on the dollar, what do you think would happen?
Nope.
They would probably be very polite, get up and wish you well with your endeavor and continue on. So what I did, the forty-one thousand is not the total offset. Our portion is bigger than that. Well, we're proposing to do here, it's obvious that thirty cents on the dollar to any emergency service, regardless of whether it's crew, Burkeful, Nottway Rescue, Blackstone, it doesn't matter. Thirty cents on a dollar in today's world is just not gonna get you there. You know, if, if the budget follows as we think it will, by twenty, by twenty twenty-five, it's gonna be between six hundred thirty-five thousand to six hundred fifty thousand a year. Again, remember, capital outlay, revenue recovery is something that everybody is misunderstands greatly. Right now, today, our revenue recovery is forty-one percent of our total budget. So when you think of it from a management perspective, in, in my career, I was always shooting for ninety percent. And, and Mr. Costin and I had a talk the other night, I said, even managers worth their salt, they build their budget at a hundred percent. It's subject if they got people above them to get cut by ten percent and then you have to figure out how to make it work by moving capital outlay money and so forth around to make the budget balance. It's exactly the same. So when I put the, the forty-one thousand in there, which seems to be a, a big step, it's the first step. Instead of giving everybody sticker shock and telling you that you need to be at forty to forty-five percent, we're gonna take, we're gonna try to take this a step to get there. And that's really all that it's about. We, we're having very good luck right now. Last year was a terrible year for our volunteers because we were incredibly short-staffed. There's still a short-staffing issue going on, but fortunately, we hired two people last month, which completes our six people that we need. Dewey County starts their firefighter EMTs out at forty-six thousand, I believe it's Hopewell, it's at forty-eight, and we're at forty-seven six. We instituted health insurance, we've also instituted paid time off, and we're working on the only retirement plan that we can have, which is a simple IRA. So those are the things that we're doing. We're trying to attract the best for the future, but it is not without quite a bit of cost. But even when you look at six hundred thirty-five thousand, if you were to staff Burkeful Fire Station with fire and EMS for five people, that takes twenty employees at fifty thousand dollars apiece, plus the benefits.
So you want, because that's where you want twenty-four seven.
Yes. And, and I didn't mention, but we staff, we're staffing twenty-four seven with two firefighter EMTs now. And we're filling in, we have six full-time people. Our folks work twenty-four on, forty-eight off, and that's two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours a year per person. It doesn't equate the same way as a normal employee. We use firefighter staffing rules, which through the Department of Labor, we can work them two hundred and twelve hours a month in a twenty-eight day period before they kick into overtime. So they work normally ten shifts a month, they have an optional unpaid Kelly Day that they can take if they wish, which puts them in right at twenty-eight hours overtime a month. So EMS, EMS staffing is different than fire staffing?
Y'all, I'm, it's one of the, it's sort of, I'm trying to, and I appreciate you taking on baby stuff, even though a lot of people might say forty-one thousand dollars in baby stuff, but if you look at all the picture, it is a baby stuff. And, and we, I'm telling you, Boyd, we're gonna have to have conversations about bringing, we're gonna have to figure out, we, we're gonna have to figure out how we can bring some more revenue in just for.
Fire.
Fire EMS, no doubt about it. I'm gonna probably be asking Buddy when he comes up, you know, start getting some options and we're gonna have to have public hearings and go that. We passed, we, we should have done it two years ago and we didn't kick the can because, I mean, you see the cost and then, and Joey, I apologize, I'll let you speak in a second. You see the cost, you can't, they'll drain you general fund. I mean, there's no question, because there's no volunteer, you know, and they're doing all they can, so. But my question is, and I'd like to see, Joey, you got things you want to talk about too?
Personal.
Okay. So, so, so my question is, going back to that thirties cent to the dollar, what, what is the, what's, what is most counties, I'm just asking, is it a, is it a, is it a number we can be?
Industry standard.
Industry standard, yeah, some, some number that we can say, hey, we should.
If you put it in perspective, the ones who have, who have let their systems collapse before they do anything.
Right.
And that's what's happening across, when you follow these things, and I've followed a lot of them, Buckingham County is a very good example. I think they're putting well over a million dollars just into their EMS alone and because it collapsed. And, and what we want to do is, we don't want it to collapse. We feel like, you know, I'm on the end of the train here, literally, you know, I'm, I'm sixty-eight years old, I've been doing this for a really, really long time and I won't be doing it anymore years. And I want to set the stage for a stable department that has the staffing it needs to give the people a fighting chance. We, we need to continue to build volunteerism. Volunteerism's what's gonna cut the cost in half. If you can keep that going, even though it's gonna be diminished, Joey can tell you, today's volunteer is not his and my generation. It is not. That does not exist anymore, but it still does exist. It just is different. All of you, look at your own schedules and the amount of time that you have, you think about how much time you would have to contribute to something like emergency services, and the question answers itself. People have busy lives today, so just like I said, I've got thirty-one people on the roster and that doesn't count the auxiliary, which in itself raises ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year, which goes to everybody. They have sixteen, seventeen people that help run that store they got, so it's not to do away with the volunteer system, it's to continue to work to build that, but we have been so stressed that there was no time to do anything but to try to answer the pocket calls.
I got you.
Nothing else. We couldn't do fundraisers, we couldn't.
All right, but, Mr. Shoot, I just want to clarify one thing and, and when you say you answer this citizen's call, I think some people have a false impression that Nottway or any squad in Nottway is running non-emergency medical transportation. That is not, that is not what y'all do. Y'all only respond to emergency calls.
Burkeful Fire Department is, is only strictly nine-one-one. We do not do anything else besides nine-one-one.
All right. So I, I think that's important, it's a little costly, their numbers are so far out there, that has nothing to do with non-emergency. That has nothing to do with non-emergency medical transportation. Yeah, and we just got a lot of, you just, y'all read the Nodaway Emergency Squad there. Did I understand it right? They're not, they've made some strong changes.
Yes.
Fair statement.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I feel like we're talking about a little bit, that scares me.
Part of the problem, you have to staff for availability. Because no one knows when your emergency is going to be. You know, hey, we had a really good scenario where it all came together a couple of days ago. There was a call in Blackstone and both Nodaway ambulances were out. Berkle was dispatched to it, which is the norm, the third call is usually going to Berkle. Uh, our crew went down there. The call came out as a heart attack call. And they got there, the person was having a stroke. So they, they struck out and headed back towards, uh, towards Farmil. But they realized as soon as they left Blackstone, it was going to deteriorate worse. So they called for a helicopter, they met the helicopter and crew. This was at ten o'clock in the morning when we got the call. By, uh, three o'clock that afternoon, the patient was out of surgery. They had removed a large vessel occlusion from their brain. And they had virtually no deficit. That would not have been possible five years ago at all. So when you have to stay, this keeps me awake at night. We can go twenty-four hours and not have a call. And I'm sitting there thinking, we're still almost a thousand dollars in payroll in twenty-four hours. But you can't think of it that way. You're staffing for availability, you know. I, I look at Berkle as a, as a five-person station. If, if Nodaway County was to staff that station, there would be two firefighter EMTs there to cover the ambulances. And there would be three firefighter EMTs in there to cover a fire truck. And we're meeting that. We're, we're making the, you know, at the end of the year, we were right at five people on a fire truck, right at five people on a car wreck, and we were averaging about two and a half people. So we're tracking this stuff regularly, we understand it. And we know that if we just decided, well, it's it. And we almost have two or three times, but I, I think we're going to get up. We're getting close to a handle on staffing day was a really big problem. Because during the daytime, if, uh, I have J.R. Thorpe, our Assistant Chief, if he's working, I'm the only firefighter that's in Berkle. The SIS are paid people, so, uh, we're going to tweak on that a little bit. And hopefully we'll get it to where we had SIS during the day, SIS people. But the volunteer part portion, for every one person you put in that fire station is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For every one. So just imagine if you had put three more in there, what that would push the payroll to. To put it in perspective, uh, Nodaway County's contribution, if they approve, uh, what we requested, is still less than half the payroll.
Got you, okay. Joey, go ahead.
John's very important, and I support John. Uh, but to your point on the volunteer part, uh, yesterday, we went to support them on the house side. We sent a crew of four. I was the youngest, the six and two. So that's not the last one. Yeah, we're all being the same, but, you know, especially daytime, they're just, there are no jobs where people are leaving to go. But our budget, you know, y'all should have it. We're just asking for eight percent increase for inflation, is the only we're asking for. Uh, you just cover the inflation cost.
Is that connected with?
No, you already had it.
And I, and I, so make sure Boyd understands, he did, so Blackstone, did, did Blackstone send anything in? Is that on this thing too? Oh, okay, okay, on this one sheet?
This is, it's all, you know, it's mine, exactly what he is, is I did pull everything.
You pulled that in, I got you, okay.
I thought he said it was percent.
That's an eight percent on the side.
Yeah, and we're just asking eight percent, uh, you know, cover inflation. If by chance there is anything left over, it goes into a fund for trucks, which, you know. Uh, and we thank y'all for the support of the tank trucks, we'll have to have that in service shortly. Uh, it's been delivered to Chester and just doing some additions to it before we get that into service.
Yeah, that, that was a big miscommunication thing that went on, and I apologize to you for that. We put it behind us.
Yeah, we appreciate the help, and I mean, like I said, that'll serve the whole county, so we appreciate that. Uh, but it's basically our budget is, um, you know, same as the last year with eight percent increase. For that, so if y'all had any questions or anything, yeah.
No, it just sounds like, I think when you started off your conversation, you, you were the youngest of the, of the group that showed up. So, and so that's what, and I know Buddy's going to come to the table, and I hope you guys can stay here for a while while we talk, if you're okay with that. And, um, but I want, what it, you know, had to fold, but we have got to, we have got to figure out a revenue source. It's not, it's, it's, that, that's not their problem. They're trying to keep it above it. That's our problem. And, um, they just come to us because, you know, we, you know, suppose that was your mom and dad that, that story you just told. You know what I mean? I mean, you know, if you're bringing those on, but it don't have to be mom and dad, it's got to be your neighbor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, back in two thousand nineteen, you, you brought up one, you're talking about whether it was an EMS tax or anything like that. We, you're right. And I think this needs to be put in, implemented this year. I mean, it's, it's that serious, we get.
It ain't going to get, it ain't going to get any better.
No, but, but I mean, it's getting worse. There's times I feel like these guys are sometimes betting on us.
Yeah, we're going to, and we may as well take, take those election things, but we're all too sad.
I don't care, I will absolutely, I'll say it right here, right now. I will absolutely raise taxes to make sure those guys right there can answer the calls, medical and fire for these people, not only can, if it costs me my election, I'll still sweep it. Absolutely.
Well, I think, uh, Joey and I are both in agreement that, uh, Berkle got hit first. We have the least amount of volunteer pool of anybody, but it's going to sweep all the way across this county. It's, it may not be, it may be worse in one place than another. You know, one of the things we're going to end up having to do is, is look deeper into what's going on within the organization. And, and what services is it provided that might be different than what another one may be providing? You know, there's nothing that says that the models we use. The only reason there's ambulances in Berkle is because that's the way it worked out. Many counties, it stayed separate. Other counties said, no, you know, Denny County has it all coming under the same roof now. Because one overhead sometimes is cheaper than two. But it, it works all kinds of different ways. But there, you know, it's what he spoke to yesterday. He came with four, and all of them were Jesus.
Let, let me ask a question, so just, and then we'll try to wrap this thing up. So, uh, billing kept you, you're ahead above water.
Yes.
That'd be a fair statement.
Without billing, we were, we're none of it.
And the fire, and when you're just a firefighter, it's not a lot of money in billing, is it?
We, we don't bill.
Okay, so why is he laughing?
We don't get like two fifty if they call my question. We're not billing at all.
The, the, the reason why I'm asking, I thought, is, you know, Steve wanted to break, I guess, you know, he thought it was. I thought, what if we had another straight-up person we hired that just did billing? But it ain't enough money in the firefighting, it's got to be.
You're not going to get a whole lot off.
If you take care of our EMS bill, we would gladly.
I'm, I'm, I'm just building the water, I'm not jumping in yet, John, I'm just building the water in it. But, but anyway.
I'm thinking of maybe two hundred dollars, something like that.
Yeah, I think it's like two, two fifty.
Well, I certainly can answer that better.
Okay, I got you. Not long before. Um, all right, y'all have any questions?
I appreciate you guys, really.
But y'all would hang on, you might hang around while Buddy talks, because we got a question, I noticed. Buddy, you want to come around to the table, man, if you don't mind?
We're getting him a five, five, fifteen.
You know, you can't go to a funeral with John and shoot with, you want, you want. Y'all can see right there, if you don't mind. Buddy, you okay with this at the table?
Oh, yeah. I was going to come down, but I wanted you to focus on them. And I, I told him, I said, I'm bad at cleanup, you know, um, but in, in Blackstone, I'm going to cover everybody. But, uh, I can't say that what John did, like what he, what he had. He and I talk weekly, Joey and I talk weekly, um, we probably talk more, a lot more than weekly. Actually, I often have almost every day. Um, I certainly relate to where he's coming from because that, I grew up in a department just like he is. You know, dual house, and it, and it had the same call volume, a little bit more than that. But let's go over the call volume then. So John already told you, he has eight hundred and twenty-six. He's correct. He's a dual house, and he's got the most for a fire department. Joey has two hundred and seventeen, very busy department. Blackstone, three hundred and eleven. And then, of course, Nodaway Emergency Squad ran twenty-four hundred and eighty-one. So we all know that they cover, you know, basically two primary areas in the county, which is the Blackstone and Crew area. And John, John takes the EMS on the west.
Steve, can I put a clarification? Yeah, yeah, definitely. Just, just, just a clarification, when you say Nodaway Rescue Squad runs twenty-four hundred calls, that has nothing to do with the FASC contract, is that correct?
Twenty-four eighty-one, I have to go back and look at, they sent me a stat sheet with a breakdown. I'll have to look and see how many of those. They probably all lumpen the transports in. Because once someone is hurt, he is sitting in my, and he is sitting in Nodaway County. They are taking him out of the county to the hospital, so it's, it's equivalent to. It's equivalent to being at home in the road. You know, you're, you're, you're in the county and you need transport. Now, if they don't move, I mean, obviously, there's no call, no stat. Uh, if they're just sitting there, they don't stand by, and they don't transport many of, of FASC. FASC is more of a standby, as you know. Let me, uh, I want to give you all a colorized version of what John gave you. And this is the same thing, you go on this side of the table. Um, just want to follow along with this. This is the sheet that Katie and I have been working off of for the, uh, for the budget. This is the sheet that, like John said, he took what I had done and cut the bottom up and just put Berkle. He took, he cut everybody else off of it because he was speaking to Berkle.
Right, right.
Let's see, how many do I have?
We got it.
Need one more? Okay, one more, okay. So this is the same sheet, but it's showing all the agencies. So what I did is I took Katie's sheet, and I like this sheet, I'm proud of this sheet, actually. This is something that is easy on my eyes, and I hope it is easy on yours. I would have made it bigger, but I wanted a one-pager. I love one-pagers, and I'm sure you do. This gives you a glimpse of everything from twenty nineteen to now. So it shows you exactly what the county has contributed, and it's, that way we can see the trends. But I also took, uh, and made a green bar. The green bar, which is gray on John's copy, but that shows you exactly what Nodaway County contributed. Um, a lot of times in budgets, as you well know, the pass-through is figured in, and as it should be. But a lot of citizens don't realize that money is going to come from Nodaway County. Comes from the state, and it's just a pass-through. So we have two, you know, avenues for that pass-through money. One's the agency locality for the fire departments. And then we have the four-for-life money is from the Office of EMS Commonwealth of Virginia, which is Department of Health. So I put those under the contributions to Nodaway. That way, every year, when we're looking at those, and I'm just going to keep using this sheet year to year. And, you know, we're running a road, and I'll just take nineteen off, and, you know, we just go from there. But you can see what we're asking for, and as Joey said, um, you know, eight percent for crew. So I sat down with all the chiefs, uh, early on, back in January, maybe December. And, uh, I met with, um, you know, Chief, Chief Nepp, and I met with Chief, uh, past chief, Wilson Bow. And the two of, two of them and myself, we came up with this inflationary situation that we're dealing with. And we had just all looked at the newspaper and saw where the nation was hit with inflationary index. So we all came up with that eight percent because we know how diesel fuel is and so forth. So then when I met with the other chiefs, everyone is in agreement, uh, and we've come together collectively. We kept it at eight percent for the three fire departments. So that's why this sheet is important to you, because it shows you, uh, Blackstone, Berkle, and Crew all at an equal eight percent, uh, which is an inflationary, as, as Joey mentioned. Uh, and then, of course, you come down, and John, I won't, I won't reiterate what he, he talked about, but his is under the gray bar. So with an EMS page, in Katie's budget, it's a different page. We, we have it as fire page and an EMS page. I'm just bringing it all on one piece of paper for this. And this is the way it shows you exactly what all departments are getting in one snapshot. Um, and then what Katie and I did is went through, of course, and we took the line items and just grouped them together. And what you're seeing, uh, Nodaway Emergency Squad is not asking for an increase this year. And the main reason is quite honest. They're dealing with some financial difficulties, and they've been dealing with some operational issues, as you well know. And, and as you alluded to, Chairman Boyne, uh, you know, this letter just came out. They're reorganizing, so with all of this going on, they did not want to ask for anything. Um, and that's why it zeroed out for them. So they've got the same amount as last year. And I have confirmed that with them a couple of times. Now, if you would on the orange cells of, like, line of duty, this is something Katie and I have been working on as well. Um, we're paying on the volunteers, so I just got a text message. If you want to pin this in, Katie, you'll be happy. Um, thirty-five hundred is what they want on, on, on the line of duty. And that's only for fourteen volunteers. Um, but what that does is it probably gives enough for them to go to sixteen volunteers. They're hoping for twenty. So they're, they're basically saying that if we can grow to twenty volunteers over the year, that thirty-five hundred will cover that.
It's, it's like, and I know with the line of duty, like somebody, somebody, if somebody is volunteering or whatever, they get killed, they get, they found this hundred thousand dollars. Is that, does this thirty-five hundred go like into a account for that person? Is that, is that what it's basically?
It goes into a benefit account. Katie can tell you a little bit more about it, because she pays.
Okay. So, so that, that's something that's much ways, you know. Probably depends on how many people you got that receive.
And there's only an annual, I think, it's not every quarter or every time your role change.
I got you.
So what I want to share with the board is, um, the, the current figure, and Katie believes it might be an update to it, but it was a hundred dollar, a hundred and seventy dollars is what we pay VRS for a volunteer for line of duty. Now, a paid person is eight hundred and thirty, and that is a new figure. Um, so one seventy versus eight thirty. Um, the break you're getting here is that we don't pay on any paid people. Now, most, uh, most counties around us, I don't want to check with neighbors, you know, they do pay on the whole batch. But a lot of people go through different avenues. Some go through Bay Corps, they do, their own insurance company pays, decide, or we go through VRS. It's a participating county. Um, whereas the towns are considered non-participating, and they pay into their fire departments. So the fire departments are covered, uh, under the towns.
Right.
For the individuals, including his paid people, correct, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. So, so you're just paying for basically fourteen volunteers in the emergency squad only. And again, you know, thirty-five hundred is what we're going to request this year. So all we would do is add, and I'll go back and calculate that in on the next version. But there are no other changes that we know of. This is the request, uh, as you go down to the bottom. So as you can see, the total request, if all is approved, for the all agencies in the county comes in at five hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred, if you add that thirty-five hundred, you're coming in right around five ninety-eight. So around five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That's your total investment in the county is firing EMS.
John, you got something you want to ask?
Yes, sir. Um, hold on, Buddy, if you don't mind. All right, all right, so to y'all's point, is it time we start, I mean, really, having a conversation about a bonus for volunteer? Whether it's a hundred dollars a year, two hundred dollars a year, just some, some, some sort of incentive, incentive? Number one, I, I mean, I, I know there's probably a little hint of, you know, if you give them anything, do you have to pay benefits or anything like that? Is, is there a incentive that we should be really looking into?
Well, Berkle does a nominal fee program. We pay, it's voluntary, and it's, it's about a fifty-fifty. People pay about fifty percent take it, fifty percent don't.
Right.
But we pay twenty-five dollars per call. If, if we turn away, if we go, if it's over fifteen minutes, we pay them, we pay them twenty-five dollars a call. It's volunteer, of course, you have the vehicle tax, uh, really, as well. There's a dollar per hundred, that's the way it goes. So that's two things we have now. The IRS, now, the, the nominal fee program, which would have to be run by the department, like in our case, it's part of our payroll. We have to give them a W-2. Now, you can contribute, I believe it's up to two hundred dollars without, without a W-2. After that, you have to have W-2.
Joey, y'all do some some.
No, we did not pay. Yeah, we're, we're all volunteers. You know, the not, the money would be a nice thing, but I don't think it's going to be too many volunteers. You know, if that, if it's not in the heart, they're not going to.
It does, it's really. It does, studies, um, in, in, in Mr. Roy, because I can, um, you know, definitely, definitely, there's in other places. I know in Sag Field, they do, uh, clothing allowance, but that's a real fine line to stand, sort of. stand sort of in a situation where it's not, not an actual wage or, or some type of wage clothing allowance. But the thing is, you can, there is pay per call across the country. The thing is, is you get into FLSA issues. You get into some Fair Labor Standards Act issues with firing EMS because of, uh, salaries and, you know, what people, they're volunteering and you're, and if you're paying them and you, and you hit a certain amount. So you have to be very, very close.
Can't pay more than twenty percent.
Right. You have, you have to really be precise in what you do. And I mean, they sign up to serve their community, uh, wouldn't you agree? They sign up to serve their community. Um, in all, in all aspects, whether it's a hurricane or whether it's just a car accident on, on Wednesday afternoon or whatever. Um, I mean, and, and they know coming in, you know, we all, we, well, all of us here, we've got combined, we got forty-something years, a hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty.
We had a hundred and twenty, we had a hundred and twenty volunteer years, right? Three of us. I mean, we never got above that. And a hundred and twenty volunteer years. Um, but we understand it's a new generation too. Looks at that. But I think, uh, you know, getting back to, and I want to say something that, that, that Chief Shutt always says too, and I want to convey this, is we can look at that, but I think the money for trucks and the money, like I said at the board meeting the other night, I made these notes again, just to reiterate. Your top challenges for financial opportunities is apparatus for fire because they're, they're up to a million dollars and they have a one rolling stock going down the road. And then EMS payroll for staffing. And it can be a combination like he's doing, but it's staffing in general. He's, he's doing it on both sides, which is, which is creative. That's a kudos to him for putting them on the fire trucks as well, just because he can't get that many people out. And he's got the highest call volume. So, um, EMS payroll for staffing is your largest amount. And ambulances, the difference in ambulances versus fire trucks, they don't cost as much, however, they're about three hundred thousand, empty. But they have a program in Virginia and it's really nice and we all have been benefactors of this. It's called Rescue Squad Assistance Fund and they pay fifty-fifty or eighty-twenty twice a year. So it's wonderful. You know, so it's a big pot of money there. It's through, through the Office of EMS. And there are a lot of ambulances in South Side of Virginia that will purchase with that grant. The only thing is you got to come up with a match. So the challenges are, you still have to put money into it, but not as much for EMS. And then fire unbelievably going up and up and up. And then of course you're on your staffing. The thing we always talk about, the value of a volunteer, I, I crunched some numbers and the county match is, um, it's only fifty thousand. If you were to put one person in the building today, at today's wages and benefits, you, you can round it off to fifty. I know that sounds expensive, but by the time you do everything for them, it's about fifty. Multiply that times one hundred and that's a five million dollar payroll.
Well, that's what, that's the question I had.
Five million.
Because you're looking at five ninety-five here and, and just to realistically put a, 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 just in perspective, if Notaway County was paying for all of this, that's what I was going to ask.
Be over five million.
Right.
Just for payroll.
That's what I'm going, what would that whole cost?
And that's none of this, that's none of these lines you're looking at because you still have to do that too. See, this is trucks and equipment right here, which you're looking at. So this, that's in addition. So it's five million plus another six hundred thousand to do that and that keeps going up as well. And we're not even talking about buying trucks yet.
That's right. So I mean, you're looking, you're looking at twenty, thirty million dollars to, to get it started.
Well, I wouldn't say quite that much, but certainly, you know, uh, doing the capital outlay, as, as Ted mentioned, capital overlay, we have got to, we've got that all figured out on a piece of paper too. And it plugs it, all of them have plugged it and it's in your budget package, what they would like to see at replacement years through the next fifteen, twenty years. So if we outlay that, that's, that's on top of it as well.
So, so board members, do y'all have any, any questions and clarification? So, buddy, if, um, if they don't have any, if you, if you. So we really do need, um, somebody to start coming up with a, a financial plan. Uh, let's call it that. Let's don't call it taxing, let's call it a financial plan. That just sounds so much better than that. But anyway, so we, because we got revenue coming in and.
Big, some places they have a special tax for this.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where they get the money.
And, and so.
We haven't put one in, but.
So we, we, we got, we got, um, and I'll just be, let's, 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 let's be thinking about it now. So we got, we know we got a budget meeting coming up before, after tonight. And then we got a work session that we almost, it's already, already filled in March. So let's have another work session that we, that, that maybe we could plan down the road. I don't know. It, it won't, it won't be in this budget. You understand what I'm saying? I know, I know that. But, but when we can start coming up with a plan of having.
Get the plan.
Right. Because I, I see different things that some people tax if I own a plot of land or a dwelling tax. I don't know how, is there so many things like that that you can do? Or, you know, fee or whatever they call it.
Sure. What it took to this as well?
Right. So.
But there's a, if you don't mind, I can, I can give you a glimpse of this, just take a little, just a second. Uh, it, to, to Mr. Vaughn's point, um, so Commonwealth of Virginia, I mean, this, this is a, this is a common way of, and there's five or six counties in the Commonwealth that do this. The last one was Orange County, uh, which is sort of rules. Um, Prince Edward had, I believe, an EMS tax and I'm going to look into that real close. But here's, here's the thing that I found out. Um, in twenty-seven days, twenty-three point one of the code of Virginia, this is the establishment of fire zones and districts tax levies. But the fine and pretty is at the bottom. The amount realized has to be, shall be kept separate from all of the monies of the city and county and shall be applied to no other purpose than the maintenance and operation of the fire departments and companies established under provisions of section. So in other words, it's a fire tax.
Yeah.
Which has been established for years in the Commonwealth of Virginia for, for locality, a city or a county that wants to participate.
And it has to earmark for the emergency services.
For fire.
Fire.
For fire. And they, they don't say anything about EMS.
Oh, okay.
And, and the thing is, um, we need to look and see how some of the combination departments are doing it to see if they can use any of the money. I don't know if Chesterfield is able to, well, they don't have a tax, but Prince William or Orange, you know, look to see if any of it is used for EMS. But it says specifically he a fire company. So if EMS is within the fire company, you know, um, um, as, as a lot of them are, that's a possibility. Now, the other thing, I've already, I was already ahead of this before Mr. Roy mentioned it. I had gone over and looked at our assessed values. And I, I've already figured it out and I can just give you a number that you can do the simple math on. Uh, if you were doing something, uh, along those lines, uh, we have an assessed value right now of nine hundred and sixty-nine billion. So if you divide that by the math, and I've got the formula right here, you divide it down, it comes down to ninety-six thousand for every one cent on a hundred. So you can round it to a hundred if you wanted to, but right now it's at ninety-six. So you could do the math, ninety-six thousand for every one cent on a hundred is what that would do. I mean, just if you're doing numbers. So then when you look at your need, you say, how many cents is that? But ninety-six, one cent, ninety-six thousand. And that's what you got in addition. And right now we're, we're doing, um, we're doing six hundred thousand now. You know, for firing EMS, of course, that's going to continue to, to have a slight increase. But that's on your sheet, basically what you see on your sheet. Um, so I have looked at that and we can also look at other options, uh, along the way.
Okay. Good. So, okay, buddy, just to kind of get your brain a little bit more. So by setting up a fire district taxation program, you're actually separating this money out of the overall budget. And it's, it's a dedicated stream to them.
You can earmark and what you can also do is you can kind of earmark it how you want to for that purpose. Um, the other thing is, of course, and we'll be sending this to you, the next meeting is this capital overlay sheet. I think I shared it with you one night at the board meeting. But their budget sheets, and I'll close on this, their budget sheets that Katie put in, where they do the capital, they, they told us the year of replacement and what, what it would cause and what the unit number was. And I've already got it plugged out to two thousand and thirty-three. And we got it beyond, and I think some of them gave me figures up to two thousand and thirty-seven.
Right.
So they're laying it out for us and we're putting it on the sheet. And this right here, it will, this will actually need a, a source. You know, we have to, to be able to do this, it is thirty-seven emergency vehicles. So thirty-seven total. And if you count the two, uh, that I'm responsible for, like ASG truck and all, we have thirty-nine emergency vehicles in Notaway County. And that's our.
So at this current rate right now, what, what do you think this funding source would be? Uh, how many pennies?
Wow, I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you do the math on that. I mean, you know, you can, you can make it whatever you want it to be. Honestly, I was just giving you a one cent fee.
Right, right, right.
So we know it's ninety-six thousand for one cent. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's really, it's a mathematician.
Well, that's, that's in line, that's in line with Adam Portoplas. David, you just told us one penny, a hundred thousand.
Absolutely.
That's, that's exactly what they told us. Um, what I'm, I'm visualizing is pulling that penny out from the real estate tax, let's say for example, the real estate tax. But it's basically still going to be paid through a fire district tax.
Right.
This is akin to, uh, several discussions that, uh, I know I had with, uh, current board member, oh, excuse me, council member in Blackstone, uh, when we were talking about the personal property tax and he was doing a comparison to New York. Um, and it's like, okay, well, yeah, it's a lot different because they have, um, a village tax, the township tax, a, um, county tax, the city tax, a school district tax, where we kind of clump everything together, they kind of spread it out. So this is, this is kind of beginning to spread out.
Sure. I mean, this is one option and as you move forward, don't forget EMS because I wish the Commonwealth, I wish the Commonwealth of Virginia would put EMS. And I think that's coming. I believe there's a bill in, in the General Assembly right now. They're, they're, they're going to do a study where EMS is going to be pulled up to the forefront. It seems like there's a couple of things that have been left out on EMS. I think you'll see that come up to more options under the Commonwealth Code. Uh, but don't forget EMS because as Chief Shutt said, and this is true, I mean, I've dealt with the ambulances for many, many years. It is, it is about a forty percent revenue recovery rate on, on billing. About forty percent. A lot, a lot of agencies that are billing only are getting one-third to one-half of their operating costs back from revenue recovery. So it's, so it's nothing you can hang your hat on, but it's needed. And what it is, Medicare pays a little better than this fire billing. Fire billing is kind of, you know, it's all over the map. Medicare, you'll pay some and then Medicaid will pay some. Medicaid doesn't pay that well. And then you got your other ones, your various private companies, Anthem and things like that. And then you've got a lot of self-pay. But I think the Notaway Emergency Squad told me they don't have any self-pay.
All right. All right, we got to, we got to be busy. Did I got any questions? No, good stuff. Um, and so just make sure I'm rounding that up.
We'll keep you updated at future meetings.
Right. And very, very politically correct by saying, that's our problem. He wanted you to say four cents. He wanted you to say that.
And I'll be glad, I'll be glad to work it up for you.
Yeah, I got you. You can make a whole lot more if this is not. So, and now, thank you, I think I already do, and I'll keep. And, and I said this before y'all walked in here, uh, I told, boy, I said, man, we got this nice DOC and now we need an emergency to have.
No.
Good to see you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Look, Craig, I know you've been a little, your family, it's okay, my friend, you need no black on people up front. Come on up there to the table. And, and good to see you, man. Thank y'all for coming. Good to deal with you, thank you. And I didn't get a chance to see you. Actually, Sharon, you're up. But thank you, gentlemen, for coming up here tonight, this evening, I appreciate it.
First question, is there, are you doing, are you building a meal in this field?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I believe we're trying to hear some of this and, you know, because you can put the budget with everything, you know what I'm saying? But anyway, uh, what's your gentleman, what do you, what do y'all, you know everybody to table? Congratulations again, Mayor. And, um, both of us, we had a good conversation the other day in my office and I appreciate y'all coming up here the other day and, um, and, and hopefully we can, um, uh, build a good rapport with each other and, and making some improvements in our relationships and we all in this thing together. So, and I said it to, to, uh, Mr. Mississippi the other day too, if each town, if any town flares, we all flares. So, and I think that's what I call this.
We had a good meeting and Ted was there last night, John was there, both watering the crew and all of those kinds of things. And, uh, uh, I think that the town, just so you know, we're trying to work together. We're still there.
Right.
And we're available and, uh, we have a water treatment plant already built and we've got nine million gallons in the draw out of that reservoir. And Prince Edward got eight million gallons, so there's water available in the county if everybody can make it work.
Make it work.
We're still here.
Okay.
Um, there were two items that I submitted that may be in a package.
This is right here.
They have one of them. I didn't know.
Okay. Definitely, I'll go through them all. And I also told our bus director that I would talk to you guys about that.
Okay.
So there'd be really three items. Now, I don't know what order you guys have them, but, uh, the town submitted, the town council authorized, submitted two budget requests. First one being a forty thousand dollar, we originally made a hundred thousand dollar request and that the pleadings and good, uh, counsel from Ted said, one, there's not that much money in the fund.
That was the easy part.
And two, there may be other activities in the county. I don't think Ted wanted to spend every dime in Blackstone, do something on the bone for the folks to be up there in the county.
This is rehab stuff.
We, we have a program in Blackstone called weatherization. And we're the only town in the state of Virginia that does this that I'm aware of. Um, and, but there are state agencies that do this, but we actually take a portion of our electric revenue, fifty thousand dollars a year, and we weatherize homes.
Oh, wow.
In the town of Blackstone. And we put roofs on them, we insulate them, we put new windows on them. But what happens most of the time is we get into the house and find out it's too far gone for fifty thousand dollars. And we're finishing a home right now on Fall Street for a Mr. Blunt, who's a retired army veteran, uh, has got significant health problems and we're finishing a new home for him on Fall Street and that is being built a hundred percent a town month. Those monies are paid back on ability to pay based on his income, will dictate what his actual payment is. Those monies are paid back on an ability to pay based on his income, will dictate what his actual payment is. And some, some people have a little twenty-five dollar a month payments, and we have a forgiveness of sorts. Uh, in our understanding with the county, those payments will come back to the county. We will pay you guys back and put that money back in so you can create some following sun and maybe something in Crete, Berford, or in the county or something. Uh, Ted recommended a figure of forty thousand dollars and, uh, so we revised our request from a hundred thousand to forty thousand dollars because one, there wasn't that much money in the, in the kitty, and two, that would leave an appreciable amount for a project in Crete or Blackstone.
About spread it down a little bit.
And this is forty after the fifty of.
And you're giving us fifty last year, that's correct. And that, that fifty thousand dollars is now being sent on Marlene Patterson's home on Patterson Street. We're doing full renovation of her house. Uh, we're going to exceed the fifty thousand, the cabinets down, the kitchen and the whole floor and back wall are rotten, so, uh, I can already pay it. We're going to exceed it, but we're in it, so we pay the changeovers. So we do fifty thousand dollars a year. If our electric sales ever increase appreciably, perhaps we go back to county or the town council and get some more. But this is about five years we've been doing that program, so we've probably done a half dozen different homes.
You know, that's a, it's better than being homeless. You know what I mean? It's like, I mean, it gives them that they have a home, you know, so I get it. And some of the houses are pretty bad shape.
Yeah, we're moving to Blackton.
Right, okay, so kill the two stone, I mean, two or three stone away, yeah.
So this is, we have four different programs in the town of Blackstone. Uh, we have weatherization, which is fully paid out of our electric system. Uh, we also have block grant money, which is what we're using as state money from the Department of Health and Community Development. And we're finishing up our last homes in the East End area. That, you know where you stand, Mr. Miller, that's the Bay Street area. Uh, then we also, uh, just made a north plumbing rehab, which is a hundred percent grant program through the state. But the state doesn't fund it very well because it's a hundred percent grant, it gets snatched up pretty quickly in the early part of the year. And then, uh, last thing we have is a workforce housing program, and I think we're, we just sold our first house to a young woman in Blackstone. And we're building homes and we received four hundred, five thousand dollar grant through our Commonwealth Regional Council. And we're going to build three homes, create a revolving sun because the citizens bank will take mercy on us. And once we finish construction, if the person qualifies, citizens bank, we hope will take the loan permanently and pay it back and we can build another house. So, uh, we probably will build twelve, fifteen houses in the last year.
Okay.
And renovate additional. We're proud of it, we like it, and it keeps parts of town like East End and Fall Street from coming light. And we've got some light issues and we turned down. Since two thousand and eleven, we tore down about forty-five houses in Blackstone. You wouldn't notice it, there's about forty-five different rooms that have been removed in Blackstone. Most recently down Oak Street, that we just tore down. So we're asking for weatherization money to supplement the fifty thousand. It's not going to decrease the town's contribution, but still put in fifty this coming year because this would be forty additions. So it would be, we would match it with our fifty thousand. This current year is going in Mr. Blunt's house on Fall Street. And we have to have him in this house probably in over two weeks.
Very dark question, but so when they die, it's, that's, it's just.
No, there are some restrictions about them dying.
Okay, you're not kind of like my, my mom died, you call she die, you know that, I didn't realize that.
I, I, I'm sorry, but, uh, if the same person, a lot of these people, Marlene Patterson is in her eighties. I mean, she's elderly lady, uh, but if she were to die, her family or her heirs has the responsibility of doing one or two things. Pay the outstanding portion on the lease. And/or they can find a qualified tenant and move into the house that qualifies financially. It's only a five-year deed of trust, so.
Yeah.
Most people make it, but in the event, we had one gentleman, a Mr. Bishop over on Tattersden Street. I went off, you know, Carl Bishop? His dad passed away, and we were under construction in his home. And they chose, they didn't want to rent it, they wanted to sell it, so they paid us back. And the state allowed us to keep about thirty-two thousand dollars that we put into his house. And they paid it off at the sale of the property, they gave us our proceeds, and we used it again. That's called program income, and that's what this money is that we're asking you for. This is program income that the county collected for a project, got twenty years of benefit, twenty seven years. But program income isn't available anymore because David Norton, in twenty-twenty, as part of the pandemic, he waived all the payments on those particular block grant programs. So East End folks don't have to be paid free, one hundred percent paid for them. But there is a five year.
Is that that Democratic guy?
Yeah.
The thing with Daniel.
That's normal way, I don't know. So some people end up having to pay, some people don't have to pay, but, uh, whether Yonkers ever changes it or a future governor, but we've had no indication that they're going to start making people pay back, and that's called program income. And this forty thousand with program income, I talked to Ronnie about five years ago.
Yeah, I got you.
And that's how I knew it was in there. And if program income will be able to pay back their home payments and the county, but it hadn't had a house with project in the pipeline.
He has forty thousand is money that we have in the account.
All right, that's. What do you reflect that in the budget?
So it's not in what you see every year when you're adopting the budget? Because there's typically, it's only, I want to say, it's between three and six thousand dollars that we budget every year for expenditures. And that's just for recording deeds, the deed of trust is from. But with the new, with this plan, if it's approved, then we actually budget that amount as an expenditure and it just comes from the fund.
And, and doing it by the budget is, it works for us because we don't have another person immediately ready. And we got a waiting list, but we still have to do inspection and all of that, so we wouldn't be ready to get started.
And this goes back to a grant, actually, there's two grants, one was in Berkle, one was in Crewe. And there's less than a thousand dollars still to be paid. And then of course, once each person pays it all, as, as Katie said, we'll, we'll bring it to you all to release the deed of trust and, and do those files and everything. But we should be through with this program fairly soon, I'd say within the next two years, uh, and we're going to have this pot of monies in there.
Well, we need to also, and I appreciate y'all being gracious, you know, I really need, we need Crewe and Berkle to be, and Berkle's a, you know, and is somewhat disadvantaged because they don't have a town manager, you know, that, that makes a difference too. So, um, I don't know how we can, maybe we can talk about it, you know, if we're capable in some way.
I've, I've approached both Jay and, uh, David and Brian.
Okay.
Um, Brian's asked for some additional information about the program. Because I think maybe they would like to try to start doing something akin to what Blackstone's doing. But, uh, the biggest thing was, you know, Blackstone asked for a hundred, and we got like seventy.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We just don't have that much in, in the pot.
All right, that was one down, what do you got, two more?
Number two.
Okay.
Town Blackstone was approached as part of, if you remember, we, and I don't want to get into the moment, more stuff.
Talk to Sherman then.
Those old school buildings over there.
No, no, I know what you're talking about.
And there was a, a deal cut and a motion made by the previous town councils as far as tearing down one of those old buildings. And they're coming up with a plan for putting up portable classrooms in the event there was a tornado or something like that. And, and giving a plan to the school system about tearing the two-story building down. It's not all that hot either, but it's some better shit than the, the one-story building. As part of that agreement, the school system wanted us to accommodate the Notaway Gators football program. And build them a complex or a facility. We were kind of chatting about with Mr. Miller and some ideas. And so that was put into that agreement that ultimately was approved by the previous council. This new council wants to revisit the topic with you guys and the school board about, about tearing these buildings down. But, uh, we had built a football complex with a gator. And if you notice, right there in front of the primary school, there's now a level space and it's a football field. My football field looked a whole lot different than what our engineers and saying had to be done, drainage and grading and all those kinds of things. I really wasn't expecting, but the town spent about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars building a concession stand and grading and putting drainage structures in for the football field. That got us a football field, we got gold, we got some bleachers, but I have to school board. I don't have the guts in the concession stand. The council has authorized and given me ten thousand dollars so we can go ahead and wire it and make sure the plumbing is adequate. But I still need to buy fixtures, stainless steel sink, it's going to prepare food, you have to have a wash sink and a rinse sink and a hand wash sink. And the health department has certain restrictions. That's what I'm asking you guys to help us with, and it's strictly for the Notaway Gators, Not, uh, Notaway Rec Association. I think it's Notaway Rec Association, it was not Crete, Berkle, and Blackstone. We built them a concession stand in twenty thirteen. Now we've built a concession stand for the gators in the candy wipe program. And we spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars doing the fields and concession stands. Council has already authorized, we've spent ten thousand dollars doing wiring and plumbing and putting fixtures in and that sort of thing. But I need sinks and I need, uh, air conditioning and I need, uh, uh, things like that that, and I'm down with the games. I said, all right, what do you got to put in? He said, listen, you know what it costs to buy something on him? It's not baseball, you don't get a three-dollar hat and a four-dollar t-shirt, this is a hundred-dollar helmet. I don't think they got a lot of resources, I don't be wrong with that, insurance and all the things that they gather and that's given, shoulder pad and all that. So they really don't have a lot to put in, and we, we tried to tap that, that source, that problem. And, uh, coming back to you guys, I need, and we're asking, and fifty thousand dollars is an arbitrary figure. And it's basically air conditioning, fixtures inside, like a counter or stainless steel appropriate counter, it's in those kinds of things, stainless steel sinks. I think the gators are proposing to bring their own coolers, you know, the children units, so put drinks in, stuff like that. And, uh, I think they're going to do a chest freezer, and I think they're also going to do their own ice machine. But we're asking you for fifty thousand dollars coming to cost from the school board and, uh, air conditioning in the, in the building and for the sinks and any other kind of fixtures for food break.
That's what I was, could, a couple, just a couple of things. All right, number one, as you said, the candy wipe, um, are they looking at whose tournaments to help generate revenues?
Well, I think they rotate, if I remember, and Amelia, Glenn Wilpersen, he was on school board and was the rec director that we hired when I was over there. Uh, we have football program, same exact thing like the gators, twice a year or whatever it is. They have a Super Bowl, and their Super Bowl rotates a little, so Notaway's turn will come every four years, five years, and wherever.
Y'all own the land, right?
Where the football field is, yes.
The reason I'm saying is, I'm just, I'm just talking to the board, I'm thinking a lot again, so. Can't we, or, I mean, technically, if somebody wanted to play flag football like that, they could play that, it does have to be a gator.
Well, no, because now the one thing we try to reserve for the Notaway Rec is the interior of that concession stand. They keep candy in there and drinks and.
Oh, so, so the building itself is where.
Building will be earmarked for the gators, not the second floor necessarily, that's why I can announce the booth and use it, but. We try to keep that first floor because, man, I can tell you, this one's coming in here to use this, and it's my slurping machine, and you guys took the candy balls and. So that, inside of the concession stand will be strictly gator, but yes, we do rent out softball fields for, because of the lighting, many, many lighting fields around.
Right, 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 no, I'm sorry.
And so we get people that want to run for their travel softball team and stuff like that. So yes, other people can use the field, but a concession stand, just out of experience, the concession stand will be reserved.
I, I got you, that's what the fifty is going on some pretty John, sorry.
Yeah, but strictly into the building, but it's a, it's a scoreboard also.
Yeah, because I, I think what you, to, to your point, Steve, you're looking at how to, how to get more people in there, possibly generate money, written fields out, um. Yeah, I, I rather call it, I, I rather calls, we get, we'll give some funding to Blackstone for their rec program.
Well, it's ours, yeah.
Right, 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 right. The whole hour program, right, I mean, because we.
It's a candy wipe program.
Yes, yeah, right, we don't have, right, we, the, the towns are really doing it themselves.
Right.
Okay, number three.
Number three.
And, 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 um, if you got that funding, if, if, if you, suppose you had phases, suppose you got some this year, huh? Could you, could you do same thing?
They got to wait for an addition for you.
Okay, all right, all right, I, I'm just talking, all right, okay.
We got to be a little focal, a little panel. What we can do, you got to have school, got to have school.
Got to have school. You all looked into, into entering into the contract with Coca-Cola, Pepsi-Cola.
Well, we have, I think the Rec Association does have one where they buy Gatorade products and Pepsi products. But the Pepsi folks don't buy a scoreboard, they buy an olive in a minute. We'll buy your Pepsi drinks, you give us a scoreboard, they'll go to, they'll get a scoreboard. Go up and to the softball complex or did, and those are all, don't eat that Pepsi because we got, we feel Pepsi.
Justin Parsons is going to replace, uh, uh, you know, our basketball courts from a place where we found it advantageous to stay with them. They're, they actually cost more to get them to put a scoreboard up.
That's something. Then they own it, they feel like they own it.
Yeah, they just want you to pay the torbative prices for Coca-Cola, you know, it's just.
All right, okay.
Third item is, uh, and I apologize, I'm not as well versed, but our bus director, and this is an annual request. And she makes this every year for the Notaway line, which serves Crewe and Berkle. Rotates through Berkle, brings it to Blackstone, Walmart, and back to Crewe, back to Berkle. And she's not asking for any increase this year, uh, it's the same as last year, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And I assume you've got that request, I can leave it with you.
No, I have it in mind and I can give them a copy.
I think, I think Chloe and Digmont use that sometimes too.
They do, and last year's, um, request for an increase was the first one in a few years.
The best sales in town.
It went from ten to fourteen.
You got me, I don't know if it was an increase or not, but.
Ten to fourteen, and it was a few years before that, before they ever requested.
And we were in the bus system and we put about forty-five thousand dollars a year into the bus system, and that's my salaries and splits on salaries. But this is a request, and we'll look at, Katie got it, but, uh, on behalf of our bus director. Watch the flat through question.
All right, well, thank you, yeah, very good, very good presentation. And, um, well, well, we're having a, just so you know, uh, Mayor and Phillip, what we're trying to do is we're going to have a, a meeting of, you know, we take, absorb and everything, and then have a meeting in March, I can't remember the date. Anyway, so Monday, thirteen, um, but anyhow, we will, then we'll start.
And I'll tell you on the football, because they start playing in August, mid-August, or they probably start practicing in July. We'll probably wait for your deliberations, and I assume you'll have your budget drafted by May.
Yeah.
Pretty standard.
We're hoping with the, uh, yeah.
Y'all stand for the Elvis meeting.
And so we'll just tell you that we may have to do those things, and then it would be a reversion.
It's going on the. Yeah, but it was. Don't forget to come back.
You will.
All right. All right, that's it, thank you, yeah.
Any questions?
No, thank you, thank you for the presentation, I got to get down now. So what, what we're talking about to you? Let, let me ask this, why Sherman not here? I'll, I'll tell them, I can, come on in, Ron. The, uh.
I got to sit next to this guy. I'm sorry, I, I carried out.
It's, it's in the pillow where you have to sit by the Patrick. What, what, one of the, um, apprehensions is going on is like, if we get out of, evidently, we got a emergency. They had to bring in chip tempering trailers, and we really landlocked it when we built those ball fields behind the complex. It's, it, it changed, you know, what, and one of the things we'll talk about in the development committee is that we need to see what land we do on. You know, whereas every member needs to see, well, what do we have? You know, what does Blackstone have, put that in a color green, what does Crewe have, put that in a blue, what does Notaway have, put that red, so we can start getting a visual. But my question is, if we got the schools tore down, would the towns be willing to say, hey, man, if y'all have emergency, if we realize, we'll have to put a trail on the gator football.
We're going to put.
No, we're going to put pads in, with water sewer connections.
Waiting on you.
Waiting for you. Bring the trailer.
He needs, some, he needs to hear that.
Oak Street schools.
You want, you want.
I know, I thought you said water on here.
It was funny because. We're going to wait for an emergency to happen. No, the school says, we're ready to go. Get off the waiting line.
Well, the thing about it is, like I told Sherman, I said, Sherman, the towns are going to sit here and say, our children ain't going to get educated. They got children in the towns too, so, but there is a concern, and I don't know what happened to, when the school caught fire, then they had to do all that and, and put trails in. And, and, and it must have been an us and they thing, but I don't think our towns had that, that way about, you know.
We're going to be ready in the event it happens, that's going to be a, a level site with a sewer and water line already.
Electric supply.
And electric, we have our electricity.
They don't have electricity.
Yeah, can I probe all this, this, uh, this issue? Uh, Mr. Vaughn and I went out and visited the sites. Uh, Mr. Vaughn and I went out and visited sites, and then, uh, Mr. Rourke was in the office the other day. And I had pulled some copies of minutes that go back on this, this issue, okay? I've asked for, uh, from y'all, from the school board, a copy of the agreement, and I haven't got it. Can you get me a copy of the agreement? Because the last thing I had, the last thing I can put my hands on is a letter from Mr. Roddy Rourke back to the, uh, back to y'all. And I'm just saying, this is the last thing I can put my hand on, um, asking for some estimates on the amount of debris that would be generated if the buildings came down, and also, obviously, the process of yanking out the asbestos. You know, we can't take the asbestos.
I, I've got that information, so I'll send it to you.
Yeah, can we do a hostage stage, and I'll send you what the minute show and, and what I've got, and you send me what you've got.
I think we did tell them, and the kicker was the difference between the brick and not the brick, and that, the brick doesn't need to go in your land itself. So we, we cooked a deal with Jason Walker, who wanted to walk our hauling and all that, but any questions, we're using them, but, so we're going to just tear down the bricks.
Prove that stuff, yeah.
A hundred bucks a load, so bigger the truck, the better.
I want to keep moving, I know, so we just got something, will y'all be out here?